Let's call our meeting to order. Hopefully, everybody has had an opportunity to take a look at the agenda. What we're going to do today is work through some of the business work that we know we have to continue to work on. Dr. Boone is going to come in later and working with her on some of the data that we've talked about and some of the work that we've talked about. Under 2.03, when we start going through the Accountability Plan, the goal there is to allow for us to talk about some structuring of our work that ties to our work as a board and also allow us to have, begin some of the conversations around the measures and impact, but really with a focus on what is it that we need to do as a board to make a difference in student achievement. We also will do a calendar review. We'll talk about our governance training and update. After we finish the workshop, we'll go into a closed session and get our normal personnel and student support matters, any legal matters that we have. We'll break for dinner and then we'll proceed to move into the boardroom for our regular business meeting. Is there anything that anybody needs to or would like to have added to the agenda at this time?
Is there an area that we can talk about new business at some point, just in general, about questions or?
Did you want to do that in the workshop setting or in the business meeting setting?
I think whenever Dr. Boone is here, for sure.
Yes, she'll be here anticipating. She'll probably get here about 4:30 or so. So what we can do is see how our workshop flow goes and before we move into closed session, there'll be time. Or if there are other issues as we go through the Accountability Plan, it may pop up there. So I was teasing as we were, partially teasing as we were sitting here getting ready for the meeting. I really don't want this to be a work session. The board has said that we wanted to get together and work and talk and so that we can have a free-flow conversation, you know, as we get into it. I know typically, you know, we ask the chair to acknowledge, I mean, let's just have a discussion and just try to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity and be respectful and all those things. If it gets out of hand, I'll gavel, but I don't anticipate that. But let's just really see if we can do the work and if the time is appropriate where you feel like your question warrants him, you know, addressing, we'll do that. So first thing is the school board committees. There are two areas I'd like to bring your attention to as we go through this. So I spent a lot of time down here last week and one of the things that, as I was working through, looking at committees and preparing for this meeting, we have several legacy things that have just been out there that we need to continue to clean up as we move along. And, you know, right now, we have pretty much four, five standing committees. We have Audit and Finance. We have Construction, which I'm recommending, we rename Facilities. We have our Legislative Committee and our School Board, Policy Committee, and then the work that we do with Student Support Services. If you actually pull up our policy, B C E, you know, Beta Cat Echo, the policy says that the board will only have two standing committees. One is...
Disciplinary?
Yeah, one is disciplinary and the other is what?
Policy.
Policy. So as we talk about these being standing committees, I'd like to do two things. One, let's talk about it and then see if the board is willing to accept the others as standing committees and then change the policy so the policy reflects what we agree to. So with that having been said, I got some email, but I didn't get a chance to go through it all, but what I was going to recommend to the board is we just keep the Audit and Finance Committee as is with Ms. Doyle and Reverend Haywood, Facilities or Construction.
Excuse me, can I just go back to that? I agree with that, but I just wanted to note here, the first meeting has already taken place. It actually took place in June. Because we wanted to hold it before Dr. Thornton and Shanette left their positions so that KPMG could speak to us collectively with everybody who had current knowledge. So there will be no meeting in August. We'll pick up again in December. So I just wanted to reflect that to be accurate. So Janelle, that was in June of 2016.
Facilities will continue with Dr. Robinson and Dr. Gabriel. For the Legislative, I was adding and making it too, so going to ask Ms. Wagner if she would work with Ms. Doyle on that.
Legislative?
Legislative Committee.
Okay.
Also, if you look at the descriptions, in some cases, the descriptions may have been updated somewhat. For the School Board Policy Committee, that Ms. Bassin and Reverend Haywood would be the, on the School Board Policy Committee, but for the next couple of meetings, I would continue and just kind of, we would actually have three members there and we would announce it as a, you know, the fact that three board members are meeting, but it's just part of the, part of a transition. And then for, oh, so then the big one, Student Support Services. So, y'all know, we've been having, they call the two-member subcommittee that gets together and reviews long-term suspensions and long-term suspensions with special conditions. Then we would also discuss those suspensions and long-term suspensions, those with special conditions, any expulsions and other disciplinary matters within our closed session. And as I was going through and looking at what we were doing, we don't need to do what we're doing. And so I was, I spoke with Dr. Lanz, had some discussion with Attorney Cloud, Dr. Boone, and no one could really remember why we're doing it that way.
You mean both steps?
Both steps. Because if you read through our policies and if you read through the code, we know that we have the three-member panel that hears appeals. And that three-member panel, if they vote unanimously, then it stops there and then someone can appeal to the board. And Attorney Mungo, help me with this if you hear me going astray at any point with this. But at some point in time, we had instituted this two-member panel. And, you know, we're always trying to find out, get three, get two members to do that every so often, then we're kind of scrambling to find three members to do all the other things, then we have the re-statements, then we have the appeals. So what I'm recommending is that we eliminate the two-member panel that goes through all of the long-term susp, long-term suspensions and those with special exceptions, that we simply have the three-member committee and we would have two committees of three. So right now, we have a three-member committee that meets monthly first Thursday, and then we would have a second three-member committee that would meet monthly on, at another day in time. So anytime that we have the need for the three-member committee to hear discipline matters, we would know as board members who's participating on those committees. The families would know, the staff would know when the committee meets. And in speaking with Dr. Lanz with what they were doing with the two-member committee, it was just causing them just tons and tons and tons and tons of work, preparing the documents, revising the documents, bringing them here. And like I said, as we talked about it, nobody could really figure out what real value it was producing because oftentimes, they would, we would discuss it in a two-member committee and then we would come right back into the board meeting and discuss it all over again, which seemed to be, you know, feeding the purpose and a waste of time. So, so if the board is willing, what we've determined is we can save a significant amount of staff time, still have the board perform its legal and statutory role in terms of what we hear and what we may end up acting upon, but also free us up from additional meetings, but still allow us to do our work. So with that having been said, there could be three committees, two committees of three. I'm recommending Dr. Robinson, Reverend Haywood, Ms. Bassin be one committee. Ms. Wagner, Ms. Doyle and Dr. Gabriel would be the second committee and then I would serve in case, for some reason, anybody could not make, not make their appearance with their, with their three-member committee. So Dr. Robinson, Reverend Haywood and Ms. Bassin would be one committee. Ms. Wagner, Ms. Doyle and Dr. Gabriel would be the second committee. And I would be the alternate for, for either somebody could not make it. That would then allow us to align our Student Support Services committees with what our student suspension and expulsion policy and regulations actually call for us to do. And, and then in addition to that, as I mentioned, it would save staff time and board time since we wouldn't have the two-member meetings anymore. It would also make our closed session reports that we receive from Students Services much smaller and, which I didn't think would give us time at our business meetings for us to, if for some reason we needed a full board appeal, we would just schedule them along with our business meetings so that parents would know and everybody would know that if there's going to be an appeal, it's going to be on the third Thursday. And that way, we are not trying to scramble, trying to figure out, can we get seven members to show up at various points in time? So you have a puzzled look, so let's, let's talk through it.
Yeah, I'm just, when would the, I'm trying to figure out, when would the two subcommittees meet and how often and?
So they would, so the, the subcommittees, the three-member, the three-member committees would continue to meet monthly. Right now, we have a three-member committee that meets monthly and the way we have typically done it is, was it each quarter? Like you would rotate, we would rotate which, which three members would serve for a quarter.
Oh, okay.
Right? So now, I'm saying that...
Three or ten members?
No, we had, what is it that we would do for the three member?
For reinstatements.
That's what I'm saying.
Reinstatements was two.
No, reinstatements was three members.
And the monthly one would be?
You and I did reinstatements and it was in August, only if there were enough cases.
Right. If there's, if there's, if there's an appeal, and Mr. Mungo, help me, if there's an appeal, there's a...
An appeal of what? Of a long-term suspension?
Or an expulsion. Right. Whatever the case is, if there's an appeal, there's a right to appeal to a three-member panel of the board.
Okay.
Right?
If it's an expulsion.
Hold on. Okay, for an expulsion. So if the three-member, if there's an appeal and expulsion, we would have a three-member committee meet to hear it. If that action is unanimous, then it's done. If for some reason it's not unanimous, then you would appeal to the full board. Any other appeals would come to the full board anyway. All right. So there is no real need for the two-member panel at all. The three-member, the three-member committee would be scheduled so if we did have an appeal and expulsion, we would know when those committees are available. And so you just would have on the calendar as needed that that's when something would get scheduled on that, on that calendar.
On a as-needed basis that we would actually meet?
Correct.
So once a month would only be?
Correct.
Right.
I think, I think it's more than just expulsions, but we can pull it up and go through it. But at least in the case of the, in the instance of the expulsion, then we wouldn't have to worry about scrambling, trying to figure out when those appeals would occur. It would be...
And they can be seen in a more timely fashion.
It would be seen in timely fashion and we would all know on our calendars, you know, if something gets scheduled, who would, who would be there and at what time.
When would those be scheduled? I'm sorry.
Well, so right now, right now, we have a, we have, we have a monthly first Thursday meeting. I'm saying that one of the committees would just take that slot and then the other committee would have to determine, working with staff, when the other monthly schedule would occur.
That would be monthly at eight in the morning?
Or what, well, it probably wouldn't be this, I mean, it could be the same day, but probably would not be the same day.
No, no, I'm just saying that one committee would take eight, that the eight o'clock time slot?
Right, correct.
On the second Tuesday of the month, or second Thursday?
I mean, honestly...
It could be the second Thursday, it could be second Wednesday, it could be whatever.
What your schedule is.
Right.
I mean, that, that schedule...
Go to the three-person committee.
That committee needs to work that out, what works.
It should go around our schedule.
Correct.
So typically, in August, there is an opportunity for two members of the board to hear reinstatement cases. And also in January, for children to then come back to school at the start of the second semester who have been 365-plus out of school. So who serves on those to view this month's reinstatements, August reinstatements?
So, it's actually, right, it's actually three for reinstatements.
It's, it's three only if needed based on the number of cases. Because frankly, in the last two years, it's just been Brad and I.
So the, that's what I'm saying. So, so let's talk through this. So the, the intent is that three members of the board would hear these requests for reinstatement. We know the process that we do right now is if we have several of them, you'll have a board member with a staff member, you, we'll each hear some and then we all come together and then we decide what our action is. When you really look at it from a policy standpoint, we should be hearing them all.
All three should be hearing all of them.
At the same time.
Gotcha.
Okay. And so what I was saying is these meetings that we would have scheduled would be the other opportunity for the three-member panel of the board to hear those, hear those cases. Okay? The other, I'm going to come back to the reasons. Follow me?
So in August, one of these two committees?
We meet, so for August, because I think Ms. Banks has already scheduled some folks to come in on a Thursday, didn't you? It was August 4th?
No, it's August 4th, but I'm having four.
That's what I'm saying. But you have a, you have, you've scheduled with the family.
Oh, yes.
Right. So for August, whatever they have already told the family, we would need, just need to get board members to participate on the ones that's already been scheduled. But from September moving forward, we would be following, following what we would adopt.
That's for reinstatements or are you saying global?
For, for any, for any point in time that we have to have, so let me come back to reinstatements because there's something else I want to recommend changing on the reinstatements. But in terms of doing away with the two-member committee, everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't want to put the fly in the ointment, but the, I rely on the subcommittee when they, when they review the cases, because they review them more closely than I do.
Right.
So when we come back to the full board meeting at the, when we, when we sit there, so that's just going to...
Well, well, here's the thing. If you, if you, if you follow through the, the policy and the regs and the role of the board, it's really not our role to begin with. That when the principal makes a recommendation, it goes through that process, there really is no reason for the board to be involved with looking at what we've been doing in those two-member committees. Because, because at some point in time, if there's something that is going to be appealed, that's where our role and function, right, that's when our role and function kicks in.
So just so I'm clear, so then we won't even have a Student Support Services portion of our, of our regular board meeting?
We would, it would be, we would have it when, I have to pull up these emails by Mr. Cloud. We're, we're supposed to approve all of these appeals.
Okay.
Okay, so we still would end up...
Not appeals, but on, I don't want to, I'm not talking about the appeals, I'm talking about the, the...
The recommendations from the...
Yeah, we wouldn't see, yeah, we wouldn't, right, we wouldn't.
We won't see them on, on, at our Wednesday meetings anymore. Okay.
So today, for instance, we're going to see something on the document?
We will see some today, but in, but in moving forward, it's really not our role. It really belongs on the administration role. But like I said, from, from just in talking to folks, Attorney Cloud said the board was doing that when he got here 15 years ago. Dr. Lanz said the board was doing it when she got here 11 years ago, but nobody is really sure where it came from. And again, I was just looking at trying to structure the committees and when I started looking at our policies and then looking at everybody else's policies and procedures, we were the only one that we could find in the entire Commonwealth that was doing this.
Now, will we get a report on long-term suspensions with special conditions and?
So when we go through the accountability chart and we're saying that we want to get reports on discipline and these types of things, that would be something that we would ask the administration to report to the board so that we would follow what these actions are as it, you know, informs us in us doing our work.
So it's not necessarily going to be on a monthly basis then? It's going to be as we call for it?
Or if we say quarterly, whatever it is that we decide makes sense for a reasonable time for us to review it. But we will not be in the business anymore of getting down into reviewing student profiles around long-term suspensions and long-term suspensions with special conditions.
Okay.
Because it's really...
Not our role.
It's not our role.
Okay.
So whatever decision comes out of that tribunal stands unless they appeal and that's when we come into play?
We get into the appeal, right, and we deal with the appeal. Dr. Gabriel?
When we undergo this redesign process with student discipline, this could be changed or is this policy set no matter what ends up happening with whatever the redesign is as far as discipline matters, tribunal, et cetera?
I don't know. So, I mean, right now, we're governed by the code and with our current policy. If through that, recommendations get, come forward to change it, then that would, that would guide us. But right now, what I was trying to do is align our actions with what our policies and regulations say and right now, they're, they're not aligned.
I just have some clarification. You mentioned the first Thursday for one committee and the third Thursday for another. Is that how it's going to be done? Are we set, we do it according to what's available for us? Why did you say those?
So the intent is for two committees of three to meet monthly.
Monthly.
Okay.
So you just threw out the first Thursday?
Well, we had, we had the first Thursday on because that's when the two-member committee was meeting. So since some folks were already used to that, I was just suggesting that one committee just take that date because the staff was used to it and we were used to it.
Okay.
Then the second committee would need to get together based upon your schedules and determine when it works for that committee and the staff to meet. So I didn't want to prescribe because I don't know everybody's schedule.
It's just a placeholder though. It's a placeholder so that if, if students need to have a spot to get filled in.
Well, we are scheduled, it's scheduled every month, but that is, there's no guarantee that you would have to meet every month. Just depends upon the, the flow.
Like continuous jury duty.
It's like continuous jury duty.
We can't back out of it though. Which is a community obligation.
Get a no from my doctor.
I have nothing to say.
So we're, so we're good with that, eliminating the two-member committee and we're going to work together to have two committees of three to deal with anything that requires three members of the, three-member subcommittee of the board to hear something or to act on something. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with doing this as a prototype test. If we find that we are meeting and we have the sessions and we have a lot of no-shows, then we need to give that feedback to each other and, and, you know, see if there's something that needs to be done about that because, you know, there's been a couple of instances where we've met to hear a hearing or a reinstatement and they've, they've not come. So I just want us to be able to revisit it after the first couple of meetings to see how it's working and then go from there.
Yeah, well, hopefully, there's always the chance that somebody won't show.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's necessarily a bearing on our schedule. It's really a bearing on whatever circumstances they have. But part of the intent is to be consistent enough so that people will know far in advance, there's no reason come September for anyone to question, when is the three-member panel of the board going to meet because everybody's going to know. Folks that need to adjust schedules or do whatever things that they need to do to deal with those matters, I don't mean on our end, I mean on the staffing, on the parent end. So, but yeah, all, all of this is subject to, I think we should always change if it doesn't make sense. The other thing is, it's been our practice to do reinstatements twice a year, once in August and once in January. You know, at times, we've had situations where depending upon timing, there have been questions about how long somebody's been out and some other things. So again, in, in speaking with Dr. Lanz and others, I'm recommending that we do reinstatements quarterly. So that, now from an administration, operational standpoint, they would still likely reintegrate any students at a semester breakpoint, but at least you wouldn't have the situation where somebody gets, you know, reinstated at a certain time period, but they can't, but they end up spending six months waiting and trying to figure out what they need to do. So I think if we do those quarterly and they would be again timed with our business meetings or work sessions, then it'll allow for students that are ready to get, get heard and know what their future is going to hold. It allows them to do that and it allows for parents to know when it's going to, when those hearings are going to be held. It allows for us to hold those hearings and I'm saying we would hold them on our business or work session day, so just like we're doing today. So it could be from five to six. If there needed to be a reinstatement, we would just hear it or if there needed to be a full appeal to the board, we would just hear it. And then that way, our calendars are clear and everybody knows what, what to expect. I don't have dates for those yet, but just in terms of the recommendation that we move to a quarterly reinstatement process, just want to make sure folks are comfortable with us, going such.
All righty.
Can I just add in general? I think the changes are good. What I want to be sure is that we continue to have line of sight on discipline matters and issues within the division. So what I don't want this to be is a further removal of our knowledge of what's going on in the schools because we know discipline's an issue in our schools. And I know that Dr. Boone's trying to address it. She's looking at the tribunal process. So I agree with what Dr. Gabriel said about, this is where we are now based on current world. We might have a different world when Dr. Boone revisits the tribunal environment.
Right. And when we go through the, through the accountability piece, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. But no, we all agree that this is not an attempt to move us further away. It's really an attempt to have us where we should be and then to make sure that we're enhancing efficiencies of the work of the division and at the same time, making sure that we aren't clouding the process by being involved in so many steps where we, our, our responsibility statutorily really falls in that, in that appeal area. But absolutely, heard and agreed.
Yeah, because it's only been in the last few years frankly, that we were getting the data from Dr. Harold Lanz on reinstatement successes and what the outcomes were of those various cohorts. So again, we don't want to lose sight of that kind of data, et cetera. Okay.
Moving forward, do you know if Dr. Boone or if we can have a conversation with her about who...
about who in the, from a cabinet level is going to be up to date on current practices and policies, so that if there are archaic things that are being done that we're not continuing to do them, that somebody is always looking at, are we in sync with, with our policies, or is that what the-
That's what the Policy Review Committee is, is to do.
But, but they can, I, I, okay, do you think that's too much for them?
Truly their role and obligation.
I mean, like I said, the, the, uh, I think as we talk about our work and our culture, I think because we've been more focused on looking at policies, is why we're uncovering these things.
Okay.
Uh, but we all say that, you know, what does the school board do that governs by policy? And, uh, just because I was trying to figure out how to make sure we didn't have some of the scheduling challenges I feel like, I feel like we were having. That's what, I just started looking at, well, how do other folks do this? And then I could not find this whole two-member thing, and that's what kinda brought it, brought it all to surface. So, uh, I think there are probably several, uh, instances where we've been cutting off both ends of the ham and don't know why, so.
So, so then, so then, how does the Policy Committee know when they're going to review a certain policy then? Because it was your initiative, what you're saying is that, you know, you were, why doesn't other divisions do this? And so that would be, you would bring that up to the Policy Committee to say, hey, I think you need to look at, at our policies surrounding X. But are they gonna have a rotating scale of, okay, we're gonna look at discipline, and then let's say, you know, gifted, and then let's say-
So when we go through this accountability chart, that's one of the things that we're recommending, so the, you know, board members like you are just talking about, discipline. So one of the recommendations that we would do is quarterly, the board, quarterly, monthly, whatever schedule we would suggest, we would be looking at asking administration to bring forward to us, let's look at our policies and regulations around these areas of discipline. And as we review it and align it with whatever changes come, I mean, that's what causes us to figure out what we should be doing versus what we always have done.
But I also think to Dr. Gabriel's point, there are probably these unearthed policies that don't fit into any category of discussion that we still are living with by not even knowing that we are, that you surfaced even today for standing committees, that was back to nineteen ninety-three, I think, or ninety-eight? So, who's looking at those random policies? Policy Committee is the answer.
Simply the Policy Committee, and then as, uh, individual board members, you know, our process is if we come up with something that we think needs to be reviewed, we send it to them to take a look at it and make a recommendation. So I know all of us in our own way do the same thing that I just happened to be doing last week. So we just have to be in our, uh, work. If we uncover something like that, then bring it to the attention and, and have it, have it referred for review. Yes, sir.
Two things, one is that because the state brings forth certain policies for us, this causes us to review these policies to keep them updated. The second thing is, is that as we deal with issues, the policies that are around those issues become relevant, and we look at those things. As well as what Mr. Jordan has just said, when someone else brings forth a policy or a concern, we can look at those, those things. But I think there is a place for us to go back and review some policies. We have, um, this year kind of caught up, so we, we have not been able to do that in, in years past, but I think now we're positioned so that we can go back and look at some policies and some or to the board, so that they may consider, uh, with the help of the administration, revisions of these policies.
A lot of it is more, uh, practices than anything else, it's just something that's been done and finally ask the question, well, why are we doing it, then that's when we- But I do agree with both you, Ms. Doyle and Dr. Gabriel, I think as the administration comes forward to us with these different pieces, it's gonna be a natural conversation because maybe many things that I would hope that they are reviewing is gonna, is gonna feed into that.
That, that's, that's part of my point, I think that there should be some onus on their part to say, if I'm in charge of X department, I need to be up to date on the policies that are around this department, and if I have concerns about the way that the board is doing things, or, um, the way that we are putting forth regulations or practices, I need to be able to let Dr. Boone know, or let the Policy Committee know that X is-
You're correct, but it is the way it's, it's supposed to work, that, uh, while we act upon them, nine times out of ten, the recommendations are coming from the administration, so at the meetings and as they're doing these things and putting these things together, they actually discuss them, and then they get referred to that committee. Sometimes the committee will look at it and they'll send it back to the captain, it may be two or three iterations before the committee feels that they're ready to come forward and make a recommendation to the, to the foreboard. Well, that is happening. Okay, let's get through these committees. Um, so we, we're done with student support, um, at some point, there'll be a, uh, an equity task force, um, just recommending that, uh, Ms. Bassine and I serve as liaisons to that task force, should it, uh, evolve, um. There's a Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. I don't find in the policy, or in the regulations where it actually calls for a board member to be a part of that, but I believe our new student member actually has significant, uh, background in CTE. So I just put that, uh, if that's something that he's able to make, uh, which I guess right now is an eight o'clock meeting on the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, then maybe that would be something we would ask him to, uh, to do. For the Gifted Education Advisory Committee liaison would be Ms. Bassine, um, Student Health, Dr. Gabriel and Ms. Bassine, uh, CAC, um, Ms. Wagner, um, United for Children, I would do that one. Dr. Robinson, I was gonna ask you if you have interest in doing access college, I mean, okay?
When do they meet?
I can't figure, uh, it's noon, um, at some point, but, uh, I can send that to you, and you can-
It depends on what day they meet, and where they meet too, so.
Well, they move around. So sometimes we've had meetings at, uh, you know, high school in Virginia Beach, we've met, uh, downtown, but, uh, if you're interested in it, then I can, we can get you to schedule and see if you like to do it, and if not, if it doesn't meet your schedule, then we can-
I'll take a look at it.
People else like to do it. Um, Dr. Gabriel, you gonna ask me?
I, I answered, we're good.
Okay. Uh, Governor's School would stay the same, Dr. Gabriel as the lead, Ms. Wagner as the, uh, alternate. Uh, the Greater Norfolk Corporation, uh, CTE Education High School Committee, I'm not sure, uh, what the exact complement is there. Uh, Ms. Doyle, I know you say you wanted to continue to work with that, know that, uh, uh, Dr. Robinson also had interest in that too. Uh, they had asked that I serve as well. So, we'll just figure out from them and either continue as is, and just have-
Doyle can do it, and I can fill in whenever that's-
Yeah, we can, we can alternate. I think it's good for several of us to be engaged, and if I could really impress upon the fact, we need to really get that going again, let's pick that up and move the ball again.
Do we note it? Um, Reverend Haywood with, uh, WHRO, you wanna continue with that?
That's fine.
Um, uh, put Mr. Spree down for Norfolk Council of PTAs. Again, not knowing his schedule, but, uh, if he can do a, uh, six o'clock meeting, that'd be fine, otherwise I would, I would, between the two of us, we would still, uh, still do that. But I think since we're gonna have a student board member-
I can, I can work on that, too.
Can do Monday evenings?
Yeah, I can.
Oh, okay, well, uh, well, okay. Okay, Mrs., this, can you just note that Dr. Gabriel may also be interested in that? Norfolk Education Foundation, um, typically, I spoke to Carlos again this week, he said normally the chair would be the liaison. Uh, Ms. Doyle, I was just asking if you'd be willing to be the alternate?
If anybody else is interested, please feel free.
I, I'll work with you on that, the foundation.
You wanna do that?
Mm-hmm, I'll work with you on that.
Thanks, Ivan.
Thought you liked the raising money. Okay. Uh, CSEP have, uh, Ms. Wagner and Dr. Gabriel as the alternate. Uh, then the rest of these are just, uh, organizational meetings, oh, I know, uh, yes, sir.
So, because the open campus is no longer that's not there, right, is that be correct?
It's not listed here, but that doesn't mean that, um, they have invited you to serve as a-
On voting.
It's like you would be a liaison. Um, oh, for, uh, VSBA, there's a, uh, voting delegate, and then there's an alternate. Uh, Ms. Wagner, I know if you wanted to be the voting delegate.
That's fine.
You just go to their, there's a, uh, excuse me, a book you'll receive, and then you go to the assembly and then vote on behalf of, uh, Norfolk Public Schools on whatever actions are coming before the, the assembly. And, uh, oh, I was gonna, Dr. Robinson, did you want to be the alternate to that?
Sure.
And are there any committees that we should have that we don't, that would align with city council committees that they structured recently?
I don't know, um, just trying, we're working the, uh, what they ended up doing, their committees is, is kinda interesting. So they have, um, you know, one time they would do committees like we just did, where you would have two or three mem- two members on a committee. What they ended up doing last year, um, because some council members were concerned that they never knew what was happening in the committees, there's two or three council members who are considered the members of the committee, and then, um, any other council member can come and sit in on the committee. So, at this point, my, my thinking would be, uh, if there's a place for members of the board to participate on some of their committees, we would, um, talk to them about that. But more importantly, I think we need to try to schedule, um, qualitative, quarterly meetings with them, where we can do work at the policy level and not get too caught up in, um, us just sitting in on their, on their committees. I think they're still trying to work out, um, how their committees are gonna function.
I think I saw the night that they did their committees, the whole, yeah, I saw you there, the whole com- the whole council will serve on health and education, if I'm not mistaken, it was not divided by two or three. And then, I agree, for instance, if there's a committee related to planning or housing or something, then I think, yes, should we be a ex officio or a liaison or something, I think that that would be good, and maybe we can think about talking about that during our first quarterly meeting, which I would imagine would be relatively soon.
Yeah, well, I would, so, so I have mixed emotions about, so yes, I would say that, um, but also think, like, we've kinda talked about before, that we should, uh, for lack of better terminology, be the aggressor, and put the child in the center. So then the housing and the planning and everything else centers around the child versus a committee about housing, and then the school system is considered as an add-on. That as we have our discussions, we're trying to look at, um, almost like some of the conversations we were having yesterday about wraparound services and so forth. Our goal is what do we have to do to make sure that children succeed? And then that might impact housing, it may impact planning, it may impact something else. So that would almost suggest, as we had talked about before, that we go forward executing, maybe at some of our work sessions, that we set aside time in our work session and invite the planning director or the planning commission chair, whoever, to come and be a part of discussions we are having with the child at the center, and then they can bring what's happening out in the general city perspective to, to our table versus the other way around.
Yeah, and I think that's fine, I think we should just do that intentionally and frequently, because, you know, there were discussions that day about different parts of the city, and what would be the ripple effects of decisions.
Right.
And I know you were there, and I was glad you were there, and I saw it, and, and we need to be at the table for those conversations. And so you're, you're saying we need to set the table and invite others, and that's fine, too.
So the, the mayor and I have continued to try to work through, I just, there's, uh, you know, he's trying to get his bearings, and I think the whole council now is trying to get their feel for what their new culture is gonna be. But I do think every opportunity that we have to, uh, to engage, uh, you know, we can. So what I asked, uh, the mayor if he could work on is getting to us, you know, a full description of their, the purpose of their committees and when they meet, and then we could come and come back to them and say, well, we think we would like to have somebody serve ex officio on this committee if it, if it works. If we can get them to write it down, it'd be a lot easier to, uh, to follow. Dr. Gabriel?
Okay, so going back to another, um, historical practice that had been done, and then we kinda did away with it, and I'm wondering if we need to reevaluate, um, it is, um, some members of the board had served as, um, ex officio members of commissions. So, like the Parks and Rec Commission, and, um, uh, there was an invitation for a, a board member to possibly serve on the, um, uh, Persons with Disabilities Commission. So, my question is, do we want to look at, um, having a board member on key commissions as a, as a liaison? Or do we want to have them come to us? And I will, and I will say that for Parks and Rec, Deb Rock was a very strong advocate, and she could provide a lot of knowledge, um, to, to that commission when they were making decisions. retiring, and so I don't know who is gonna be that other person there to take on what she has done.
Well, she's at the administration level, and so it would be for the superintendent to put somebody from the administration on that committee. In terms of what was, what was actually happening is outside of what Dr. Stewart was doing with the library, we were really like Reverend Haywood, when he was first doing it, he would just go and sit in the meeting. So when I was looking through this, I took all those off, because I just felt like we're already going to fifty thousand meetings.
I know, I know.
And if we're gonna focus in on our work, I was trying to first, let's figure out our schedule and our calendar and how much commitment and time is required for us to just do our work. And then if there are others that want to go and do additional work, we can have added. But I just felt like before we got to that point, can we just kinda focus and hone in on the tasks that we have before us, before we keep building outer rings and outer rings and outer, outer rings?
Yeah, I understand, I just, I want us to make sure that now that we are, that the city council is, is, as, it's, it's a new culture that's there, and we don't wanna operate in silos anymore, and we wanna make sure that if they're gonna be doing something on their end, that it is gonna be conducive to, uh, what we're doing on our end. We don't want them to recreate the wheel, we don't, we don't want us to recreate the wheel. So, I agree, we need to focus on the efforts that we have in order to get the work done that we have, um, but if it, we should be aware that there is decision-making going on in some of these entities, and if it's gonna affect kids, and some of our schools are attached to rec centers, for example, then, you know, we need to be in the loop, and hopefully the administration will come back to us and share those things and, and be a, a strong voice at that table for the kids.
I, I don't disagree with that, I just think that we have power at the pow- at the policy level. And if we realize and execute that policy, I think there's a lot of impact that we can have, and, uh, just as there've been some practices that we talked about earlier, um, exercise all the policy power that we have, so. But it's always open to, uh, review and revisiting.
I'm just-
I do remember the request for, uh, I do remember the request for the Disabilities Commission. So it's probably would be good for us to just get a letter from them to formally request someone to serve and let us know the dates and time and if somebody wants to fulfill that role, so.
Yeah, after the post. Special Ed, we do have to follow them, so it would be good if we do connect with that committee.
We, during the campaign, we went and spoke before them. They came to, I think, one of our meetings since then. But I just think if the commission is asking for a school board member to serve, if they officially request it, then we can respond to that request. Or if we want to send them a letter asking, but if one of us. I just don't know enough about the, when they meet. Reverend Haywood?
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that you put the Equity Task Force down. Within the division. And so you're anticipating that several board members would serve on that task force?
It might have been a mistake.
Where, where are you in?
I was trying to group them by.
Ad hoc committees.
Ad hoc committees. It should have been under. Yeah, that, that should have been. Yeah, you're, you're right. I, I think I just placed it in the, in the wrong box.
Where should it be, Mr. Chairman?
Well, wouldn't it? Is there an application process for the?
This was just as school board liaisons to the.
It really fall in this document at all?
Actually, no, actually it is in the right place that they are, so the Equity Task Force is not a school board committee. However, it is a task force that operates within the division. So whether it's Equity Task Force, whether, you know, before we had the Strategic Planning Committee, if something else comes up that the superintendent creates or something outside of the official committees of the school board, then should a school board member serve on that, then that's, that's where that would fall. So no, actually it is in the right place. It says non-school board committee, so it's not GAC, it's not CAC, it's not one of the ones we listed above, but it is something that is operating within the committee, within the division. So let's say if, if Dr. Boone were to reestablish the guiding coalition and there were two members of, of the school board who were going to serve on that, then we would list that under, in, in that area.
Mr. Chairman, do you anticipate appointing one or, the board appointing one or two members to a task force like this?
As needed. I just recommended that Ms. Bassin and I serve in it.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
No, I didn't hear that either.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I heard it.
I wasn't paying attention.
I may not have spoken up.
So who else constitutes this task force?
Hasn't been formed yet.
And what's the order of the task force being formed versus the regulation happening first, et cetera, et cetera?
In the, the regulation calls for the forming of the task force.
Do we have the regulation yet?
Maybe, I'm sorry, the policy called for. The policy called for the task force being formed, but they have not added any additional regulations to it yet.
And it does require regulation of that policy, right?
It, it may.
I think it does because when we talked about it before, they didn't want to do a regulation until the policy passed.
Well.
So that's why they held off on that.
We were looking at the, the Roanoke model. So if you look at how it evolved, there was some work that a committee did, some recommendations from that suggested they do certain things. Then the administration added regulations on how you do those things. So it's going to be more of this cyclical type of action versus like right now, they just could develop every single regulation that comes, comes forward. So in Roanoke, for example, trying to remember, something they did with balancing enrollment. And so then they would have to develop a regulation that would say, how would you go about doing that? At this point, what the policy really calls for is it established voting members of a task force that would then come together and begin to look at these issues around equity. And then as a result of whatever examination and research that they do, they would then eventually come back and begin making some recommendations to the board. So it's an evolving process versus knowing upfront, unless it's just something that the administration comes and recommends to us immediately in terms of specific regulations at this point.
Okay, so the question people hate to answer, when will the task force be formed and when will it begin its work?
We are to hear from the administration on that and Dr. Boone is working on, I'll have an answer for you right now.
Because I think we need the one, that's the question I think we need to ask more as a board so that things just don't keep going on and on.
Well.
And I'm not saying this is unique. I'm not trying to tag the Equity Task Force on that, but.
Well, in the, in the conversation with the Dr. Boone about it in our agenda planning, like right now, she's not here because they're doing the Leadership Institute. So she's trying to get all this stuff together, work on the things she needs to do to get her staff up and running. She is working on timelines for the task force and right now that's something that we have for her to come back and give us an update on in our next work session. I know it feels like it's just dragging out, it's just a lot of stuff that she's just trying to prioritize. But I get people in the public, they call me all the time, asking to serve on that, on that task force.
And I think that, for instance, on board docs, we have the meetings even in draft, but not that far out. So for instance, you said it would be at the next work session. Can we start building these drafts out so that we know what's coming?
Yes, you mean for the draft?
Draft agenda, so we know what's going to be on those.
So on that, on that point, you know, there's actually a policy that's, that actually defines when the chair and the vice chair and the superintendent meet and do agenda planning. And found that too, last week. And we're actually upholding that, that policy. So in terms of the, we know as a board, we're meeting first and third Wednesday. There are drafts that we can put out there, but what I'm finding tends to happen is we may be formulating something and it gets out there in the draft, the media picks it up, says this is something that we're going to do before it's been, been, been finalized. So I do think we have to do a better job of trying to communicate to the board that the agenda items that board members have brought forward are being placed on the agenda, but also with understanding that emergent activities may cause some of that to change. And so the idea was as we did these elongated sessions through the summer, that by the time we get through this work, we would have nailed down our entire, at least the next several meetings of those, of those actions.
Of content.
Of content.
Yeah. And I also think we can't work based on the media's ability or inability to report accurately. But if we just put draft or TBD or whatever.
Yeah, you know, me, I don't, I don't really care.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, yeah.
Right, well, you know me, I'm not worried about that. I just don't want, I think what our, our goal is, is that the board is aware. And so as Ms. Banks will tell you, I'm, I'm all for having the drafts out there. She was, she's actually been, been doing that. But until we finish our work here, you know, other than that initial draft that I, you know, we had talked about a couple of weeks ago, I didn't want to start populating those things until I just knew where the board was.
Okay.
You know, coming out of this. All right, three o'clock check-in. Let's do the, anything else on committees? Is everybody's good with that? All right, you have with you a draft calendar. The calendar really just speaks to our meeting schedule. Ms. Banks also included some of the work that we continued with Dr. Stewart where we tried to identify when certain actions were going to take place. The reports on here are likely to change, so I wouldn't, unless, unless it's a report that's tied to some specific board action. So for example, in October 2016, it notes TBIS update. I don't know that that's going to be the case right now. But if you see something that notes, you know, when we appoint school board advisory committees, when we have to vote on the gifted plan, those types of things, when we have to adopt textbooks, Dr. Boone administration still needs to be able to look at some of these reports based upon their approach. Some of these are carryover from, from a previous administration. But the key thing to give attention to are business meetings, when certain deadlines are associated with actions that the board needs to take, when there are conferences or events that the board needs to attend. And, and then other items are just informational in terms of Teachers Record Day, when ACTs are taking place, when there are school holidays and various ceremonial weeks and months. So I'll just ask if the board can just take a look at that and if you have any questions, let us know, but wanted to at least have, get a calendar out there for the, of important dates for the year.
So when are we going to schedule the city council meetings?
I have a, I'm working right then now with the mayor and the manager, so we're working on it. Ms. Bassin, you have a question? All right.
Do we want to add the times that the three board member?
Yes, we're going to add those in.
Right.
So this, didn't want to put those on until.
You didn't want to present?
Right, till the board agreed to it. So that you know that, right. So we will update those and eventually they'll be loaded to board docs once the committees decide when, when that second committee is going to meet.
And then will we also add all the committee times to the?
Yes, yeah. And, and that was going back to my point earlier, I really wanted the board to have a good appreciation for all of our board required commitments before we say we wanted to start taking on additional commitments outside of it. Y'all want to take a three-minute break and before we go into discuss the accountability plan? No, I'm kind of talked out. Mr. Mungo, was there anything that you heard us talking about as far as the student support that brings any concern, anything that sounds outside of the ordinary? I don't know if Attorney Cloud had a chance to.
We didn't talk too much about it.
Okay.
But I, I did check the code about the appeals of long-term suspensions and the code allows for a committee to hear those appeals. And so your three-person committee that you contemplate would be able to hear an appeal of a long-term suspension.
That's what I thought.
If it's not unanimous in that situation, then the full board would hear the appeal. It says in 22.19, 277.05.
Okay. All right, let's just take a couple of minutes to breathe for a moment and invite Dr. Bailey up to the table. All right, let's, let's come back to order and please, you know, refresh yourself because I don't want anybody to be uncomfortable. Back, I guess, last September, it may have been, we had talked about adopting this accountability matrix, planning matrix as part of our work. Then in January, we, we had a session where we started to talk about some of the key performance indicators and measures we wanted to look at as a board as part of goals and accountability. Then in March, we agreed to a set of indicators that Dr. Bailey and her team helped to develop for us. And then as we talked about looking at our work as a board, as well as how we ensure that we have accountability, both as we look at the, our job in hiring one employee, being the superintendent and having the superintendent's evaluation tied to the work of division, the division as a whole, having an accountability system that the board can, can follow. And then of course, the board itself, having its own accountability to make sure that we're doing our work that's advancing student achievement. So as we were, as I was working with Dr. Boone and the team on all the different data points that we were discussing, the discipline, academic achievement and, and everything else, it seemed like it was a good opportunity for us to take, kind of like the, somewhat of a plan that she laid out at our last work session, all the different conversations we were having around data we would like to see, but be able to have that data, have those indicators aligned with the work that we had already approved and put it in a structure in a way that actually would keep us accountable in terms of our work as a board, as well as the system as a whole. So last week at some point, Ms. Bassin walked in on me and, and I asked her if she would help because I was working on the whiteboard, trying to figure out how to map all the different requests that, that had come in to make sure that the board's will was being addressed. And then I met for a couple of hours with Dr. Boone's executive cabinet, trying to make sure that what the board was asking for and why we were asking for it was being communicated to them and that they understood it, especially as they've gone through, through transition. So what we have before you is a updated version of a accountability plan that again gives focus to the work of the board. I think oftentimes when we talk about accountability, we give a lot of attention to what it is that we believe the administration ought to be doing or teachers ought to be doing or staff ought to be doing. But when you read all of the board governance books and the best practices, when you reflect back on a lot of the training that we have, it all starts at the top. And so what we're going to do now is, is talk with the board and walk through with the board this accountability system or this accountability chart focused on the, the board's work and really giving some, a specific focus on the indicator strategies and what we need to do as a board in order to impact the student achievement or closing discipline gaps or the various things that we've, that we've talked about. So I mentioned to the board before that, you know, we went to Boston. I know that Tanya and I sat in on a session that was being run by Dr. Tom Lockamy, who used to be here in, in Norfolk. There was a presentation by the superintendent from, if I get all my different meetings right, maybe we went to the, what's the one we went to in DC? The Equity Symposium. The superintendent from St. Paul, Minnesota spoke. When Dr. Boone was interviewing, she shared with us some work she had done in Worcester with the Worcester Compass and some accountability systems that she did there. Almost all of that work evolved from Norfolk's work and really work that Dr. Bailey and Mr. Foody and others had been involved in for, for some time. So we asked Dr. Boone if we could have Dr. Bailey join us. So we asked, uh, Dr. Boone if we could have, uh, Dr. Bailey join us as the board has this discussion to try to make sure that we are focused in, uh, in discussing this work. But also to give her an opportunity to, uh, re-describe what an accountability system cycle is, how it works, and some of the things that they do from an administrative standpoint in terms of looking at these key performance indicators that we adopted. So, Dr. Bailey, I didn't know if you wanted to, uh, have any, uh, opening remarks or thoughts. Otherwise, uh, Ms. Bassin and I are gonna make our effort at, uh, having the discussion with the board about, about this effort.
Well, actually, um, thank you for, um, inviting, uh, Mr. Footy and myself to this meeting to help, um, participate in your discussions. I would like to say that we are at the very beginning of the accountability system where we are looking at data and so forth. You haven't seen any data, um, for this past school year, but in the coming months, you will see data. And from that, you know, we start talking about, um, what type of improvements we saw, what would we'd like to see further and what do we need to implement to improve overall student achievement. And so, uh, this does begin that system. And then it follows by then plans being finalized. Certainly, the district will do the same thing. And then from the district, the schools will do the same thing. And then plans get finalized around the month of October. Uh, certainly, schools are looking at a lot of stuff at this time and starting to formulate their plans. And then, once they are finalized and shared with teachers in August, then they move forward.
So, so there are data that we do know and we do have from the past school year and from previous school years. So, for example, if you, uh, were to go back and look at the, uh, education plan that we had attached, the education and budget plan, they gave it to us on, uh, DVD, a copy on DVD. When you look in that book, remember it has, uh, all kinds of data, school by school, uh, demographic data and so forth. So in, in one sense, as, uh, 'cause I'mma let Tanya begin this. Um, as we look at some of this, there are some data points that we know today. As Dr. Bailey mentioned, there'll be other data points that they'll be bringing forward. And part of what we want to make sure that we're clear on as a board, that we are communicating to the administration which data points, uh, the board would like to see, how frequently, if that should come up. And so that they can go in and begin to fill in the blank and it operates systematically versus each of us trying to see all kinds of different data points and not ultimately tying it back to the work of the board. So, um, Ms. Bassin, would you like to begin?
Sure. Um, so as Mr. Jordan said, you know, the accountability starts with us. And, um, to tie into some of the policy discussion that we were having earlier, I think this is really the crux of where, um, some of our policy and budget decision-making will, um, kind of flesh out, uh, you know, using the data maybe do-it mentality. That, you know, we'll use that to, to develop our policies and make our budget decisions. Um, but what you see before us is the accountability plan, which, um, in which we have identified needs. We have the board level indicator, which, um, again, there, as, uh, Dr. Bailey mentioned, you know, you have the, the board level, division and school level indicators. But we have to, you know, look at this from a board level. And so what you'll see is the board level indicators, our strategies, um, for, uh, addressing the identified needs, our, our, the board-related professional development, how the board will monitor the implementation and what benchmarks and standards that we will look at to see how our children are doing in this division related to, uh, student achievement and, and other, um, outcomes such as discipline. So what we've done is, um, we've already agreed, as Mr. Jordan said, that we've, uh, talked about over the past several months and have agreed upon certain, um, you know, goals and indicators. And also tying that into our board priorities, which we all are, know what our seven board priorities are. But trying to ti- uh, tie that all together, that we came up with, um, the three, uh, overarching board goals, which are, one, um, improved student achievement and outcomes. Two is around safe and secure learning environments. And the third is, uh, community and parent engagement. And so that's how, that's how we, you know, and this is a working copy. So just, you know, we, we're gonna develop this together. But those three goals are, encompass, um, all of the discussions that we've had around our, our, uh, indicators that we've had so far with Dr. Boone.
At the top, at the top.
Yeah, yes.
So, so in essence, if you took the seven and you were to group the seven, we kinda grouped them as-
Broader.
Right, student achievement and outcome, safe and secure learning environments, strong community and parent engagement.
Right.
Uh, if you were to look at some of the things that we've talked about before. So, when we talk about, uh, equity, when we talk about the, um, uh, alternative education plan, all these different items that we talk about that are, in one sense, operational and in another sense, uh, uh, actions, this really begins to say if, uh, if, if, if everything depended upon the board, uh, if student achievement depended upon the board, if safety depended upon the board, if the climate depended upon the board, if everything, uh, for success in this division depended upon what the school board does, then that's the conversation we want to have. What actions we would need to take that then would help to, uh, feed and fuel, uh, what the division would do.
Right. And I also wanna be clear that the, the items that you see in the i- identified needs columns, those are all things that, um, that we have agreed on. Um, so there is nothing new there. If you do see, you know, as, as Mr. Jordan and I went through this, there were a couple of things that as we talked about it, that we thought, okay, maybe let's, let's include this here and talk about it as a board. And you'll see some of that highlighted, um, in yellow. But those were just so, to remind us to, to talk about it, um, during this discussion. So just wanted to make sure that was, that's clear to, to everyone. Um, and for the second goal, you know, I tried, because safe and secure learning environments includes, uh, different areas, um, you know, you'll see that I included, uh, we included the focus areas such as facilities, discipline and climate as our three main, uh, focus areas under that overarching goal. So let's, you know, we could start going through the first. If Mr. Dr- Dr. Bailey, do you have anything to add?
Well, we might want to also, um, just briefly review the headings and the thoughts behind those.
Okay. All right.
Lila, would you like to do it?
No, you go.
So, uh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, what we did, um, and Dr. Bailey, you know, we're fortunate to have Dr. Bailey, who has, um, been with us through the many transitions this division has had over the last, uh, you know, the recent years, really. Um, we've been through a lot in terms of superintendent turnover and in terms of board turner, turnover. And Dr. Bailey has been here through all of that and longer. Um, so we're very fortunate for that. So, in talking about how our, our, uh, our board accountability and coming up with what our plan should be, you know, we actually adopted and modified, um, or updated, rather, uh, an accountability plan that I believe you and Mr. Footy and your, and your team had put together in the past. Um, and, and what we did is incorporated the things that we've already agreed to and updated that to, uh, you know, the indicators we would, might wanna look at, our strategies in professional development and how we monitor. So, if you want to give an overview of the, um, of the headings, that would be great. I can, I can do it as well.
Okay, I'll start.
Since you developed it.
We'll tag team.
We can tag team.
And actually, it was a joint effort with, um, our curriculum instruction department as well as, uh, school governance department, um, putting this particular, uh, a former structure of this together um, as an outgrowth of a full comprehensive accountability plan. And so, um, basically, the structure, um, involves schools certainly looking at data and identifying what areas do they need to improve upon in order to meet the established goals. And so, once they have done that, then they look at the next column. And so here, for the district, this particular column was titled something differently. But here for you, it's, um, titled board level indicator. So how will you know something is being worked on? Is that, that's how I have interpreted. And so that would involve various types of reports and probably presentations being presented to you to participate in a discussion of how the district has progressed. The next thing, the next column are strategies. So the strategies that the board would have would be just trying to align it to your calendar of events, as well as when the data would be available and then looking at who, what, when, why and how. Um, for the district, strategies would be, uh, what strategies would you put in place for that particular identified need to improve that? So it's slightly different than what the board would do. Um, moving on to related professional development, your professional development comes from the various conferences and whatnot that are listed there. However, for the school district, we would have various professional development activities. Uh, there is a calendar of professional activities that are being developed for the district now. And, um, it starts in August. Certainly, when our new teachers come back and then when all teachers come back, there's a lot that is provided at that time. And then there's a schedule throughout the year. But it's also related to the identified need. It all rolls back to the very left column, identified need.
Can I jump in on that?
Mm-hmm.
So, in that identified needs column, as we were working on this, we have, um, various points of interest that we've agreed to as a board or that individual members have indicated, uh, we need to pay attention to. So we know for another reason that we have to. We have to consider the bare minimum in terms of making sure that a school is accredited. We've had conversations around, uh, you know, what's, what are our reading proficiency levels? How are we doing in terms of, uh, SOL performance at, at various levels? Oftentimes, we get SOL data, we will look at the pass rates, but we don't necessarily go and disaggregate to see how we're doing at pass advance.
And we ask for it.
We, and we've gotten it, but then this is, this is moving forward, right? That, um, that again, for us, if you've, if you're asking for it, then, um, uh, we try to identify it in the need area. And then we're, again, trying to make sure the focus is at the, the board level. So once you get what you asked for, what are you gonna do with it? And I think oftentimes, our tendency is we get something and then we want to start prescribing to the administration what they ought to do. But we don't really have enough conversation around what is it that we're going to do. And that's what this is trying to give, uh, uh, give that attention to. Uh, Ms. Doyle was asking earlier, uh, like with the equity task force, well, when is it that something actually is going to occur? And how do we hold ourselves accountable and the administration accountable for ensuring that it occurs? So, that is something that we would put in the, in a strategy. Uh, you know, under related professional development, we talked earlier about, uh, you know, conferences that we would attend that deal with equity or something that's dealing with literacy. Uh, we went up to the conference yesterday and Ms. Doyle sent back some, um, items that she saw that it was dealing with, uh, uh, literacy. So there's something that may be a good, um, program that the administration may wanna look at, but associated with that program may be some things associated for us. You know, let's say that the administration did decide to implement something. How do we measure ourselves in terms of accountability, in terms of the fidelity in which it is implemented? Making sure that we're providing the resources. So we give them a program and then it costs, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, but we don't ever take our action to make sure that we provide those resources so that they can implement what we all s- decide is a, is a good thing. And then, of course, monitoring is understood. And then in the last column, it really goes to what are those outcomes that we're looking for? To ensure that, uh, these things that we identified as needs and these actions that we take actually produce the outcomes that, uh, that we say are important for us to monitor at this time. You know, there's always gonna be the, uh, desire and the push to, uh, to look at everything. This is an attempt to try to focus and prioritize, uh, because Dr. Bailey can tell you and Mr. Footy as well, there are hundreds of, uh, indicators that we could review. And I think over time, we probably have looked at a ton of them. But without a specific focus around, you know, what is it gonna lead to at this point in time? Is what this is trying to change our culture in terms of making sure that we're, that we're doing that. Ms. Wagner?
Can I just make one suggestion of something that might be helpful for me, 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 as well as other board members? Looking at the, um, benchmarks and standards. And I know that we're, they're measurable in terms of percentage, but can we look at raw data along with percentages?
Like real number?
Hmm.
Yeah, real numbers.
Real numbers.
Right, right.
Right, I think- Because sometimes we don't have that.
Mm-hmm. I think that, um, when we looked at the goals, the six goals, um, earlier in the year and we talked about providing number and percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly. So that's a good question.
Ms. Doyle?
So, I haven't read through this whole thing, but where would the global things like the pay and comp study come into play in alternative education?
At, um, so that would be a report, so the-
That's actually an initiative from the division led by the superintendent.
Right. And then our board level would be that we would then get the results of that study or that initiative, um, back to us. So what our board level indicator would be to receive that report based on what the administration's timeline is for a initi- initiating that study and when we could expect a report, um, so that it makes sense. So that, that would be our timeframe, um, uh, for receiving the report. So that report would be something that we would receive to show what it is, what is our identified need? And then to then go back and include that, um, the outcomes of that study into this accountability plan.
So is that in this already?
No.
That is not in here.
Yeah, so this is not meant to be exhaustive.
Okay.
This was meant to be a, uh, uh, yeah, something for us to, to say, to get to a point that we said we wanted to build this out.
Okay.
Because, uh, like I said, we would've, we wanna make sure that we're building it out as a team. Um, and as, uh, Ms. Bassin mentioned, I think not only is it a report, but it's multiple reports.
Sure.
So as you've asked, uh, you know, where are we in terms of status? The actual reporting on it may be quarterly.
Right.
And so one report may tell us how things are progressing. We may not get to the actual end product till the third quarter or the first, fourth quarter report. What we wanna make sure is that we're communicating to ourselves that we agree that quarterly, we wanna get an update on the pay and comp study. And so that everybody knows that that's what the expectation is. And we're holding ourselves accountable to make sure that it doesn't get lost somewhere.
Right.
And we're holding the administration accountable to quarter, on a quarterly basis, knowing that's what our expectations are.
I'm back to Courtney's, uh, question again. I mean, so this is a draft, I know, so we can include, I mean, 'cause you're, that is not included in this, so we can include things in this.
Definitely.
Yes.
Yes. Is there, is there anything, I don't think there's anything like specific, specific even listed in here.
There's an area that we did not, we, uh, looked at, um, around, uh-
I was about to, yeah.
Uh, retain and attract.
Yes, right. And just so, just so you know, that, that, uh, goal number two, which is to attract and retain highly qualified and effective staff, those indicators will be incorporated into this, um, working copy. So just to know that was, you know, as we were putting this together, um, was unintentionally left out. But we can talk about, if you, you know, you can look at, I think, um, I believe the document was attached with on Board Docs. But those, uh-
Right.
-indicators will be included here. And those include, you know, looking at the number of percentage of principals and teachers with a, a rating of proficient on their perfor- on their performance evaluation system. Looking at the number of percentage of hired, of teachers and principals hired prior to June 30th via early commitment letters.
What page are you on?
And, um, this is on the key perform, the key performance measure summary. That was, that was included on Board Docs. That was, that was included on Board Docs. Just so that you could see what indicators are included in the accountability plan.
It says Goals and Performance Measures Update.
And that's the older copy that we've been working with from this past year?
Correct.
That's what we agreed to back in March.
Right, okay.
Yeah, right.
So, we didn't, we didn't pull all of them over.
Okay.
But we did realize, like a half hour before the meeting, that we did not pull that over.
Yeah.
But if you look at, if you go to page 11, the last page, where we have the roll-up under Communion Parent Engagement.
Yeah.
But the priority includes the retention and attraction, not only of families, but qualified staff. You know, a recommendation would be that under the strategies, we would add the Pay and Comp Study. And then, the identified need is that we know we have this potential gaps that we believe we're seeing in terms of our competitiveness as far as salaries are concerned, you know, in the region.
Right.
So, so there's more crosswalking that needs to be done, is what you're saying?
There is definitely more crosswalking. And to tie into that, you'll also see one of the items that we included from the climate survey as it relates to salary. The Pay and Comp Study would also be something that would, you know, potentially provide some overlap in terms of a better understanding of the why, depending on what the response is to that particular item, I think. I mean, I know I'm thinking about it more broadly, but-
Oh, I think also, just to add, we may create some additional focus areas that then that would fall under, whether it be under District Climate or whether it be under the Engagement piece. I think we might have to have some more discussion to see where would it be, where's the most appropriate place to place it? But we would then create a focus area so that it's not blended in.
Right. The idea is that this new document replaces basically the one from March, is that right?
It looks like it brings the one in from March.
Yeah, integrates it.
And then-
Yeah, right.
Right. It takes the conversation around indicators. And for the board gives us, it attempts to give us focus on our work and our actions to produce the outcomes that we want to achieve. As Dr. Bailey said earlier, there would, there would be other level accountability structures that the division would have and that hopefully would go down to the school level that the school would have, that would have some of these and some others. But at least from the work that the board would engage in, it's just trying to get us focused on governance. Another example, like we talk about morale. Okay. And in here, you'll see that we pulled, on page nine, under the District Climate Survey, which I understand might still be subject to change, but we pulled some of those teacher items out from the District Climate Survey with, enlisted them under the Identified Needs. We would know, once we get the most recent updated information, we would be able to put under the Identified Need what the responses were for those areas. And if we set the goal that we want it to be, whatever, then we would begin to track that. But the other piece of that, in terms of just looking at getting reports on what the administration would do, I think we need to start having some conversations around, you know, what actions do we take to help boost morale? If indeed, the data shows us that, you know, that there's a, there's a need. But again, it was, for this particular exercise at this point in time, is to focus on the board's role and work and not necessarily trying to prescribe the actions that we think that the administration wanted to do.
Did you, go ahead. I just wanted to interject real quick, too, that the document that you saw in March, that's more along the lines of a data dashboard type report.
Right.
And so, the accountability plan is to help inform our various stakeholders of what we feel our needs are, what we plan to do, and how we're going to monitor to see, to ensure that it gets done. And then, what are going to be our benchmarks that we will shoot for? And so, the two documents go together. They're like companions to each other.
Okay.
So, in one phase, when we begin to report out, you'll see the dashboard. Because it's easier to see if we have met our benchmark or not, how we have improved.
That makes sense.
And- So, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna take this on and take it on and stick with it, then what I want to make sure of is that Dr. Bailey and Mr. Fuddy, they have the support that they need in their department. So, if that means that in order to get the reports that we need with the data behind it, that you need more resources, more staff, whatever that might be, from a board level, we need to know that. And then, what I also would like to know within these reports is, when we start to look at the data and we are, and we track the data, and I know that we have years of data previous to this, I think it's important for us to also show from a board level, since we're making these decisions at our level, times of transition. So, times when we've had leadership transition, when we've had board transition, and how that, and how you can, it doesn't mean that there's a correlate between it, but just to show how things have changed. So, for example, when we, when we look at the accreditation results, we should be able to go back to when schools became accredited. And then, we can follow that history. And we can mark on that, you know, this is when math, the math SOL was changed. This is when the English SOL was changed. But also, we should be able to track with that when there has been, you know, leadership or board change. That is, I think, going to be very helpful when we start to look at how we make our plans going forward.
Yes. So, one of the attachments that I, you know, worked on, Ms. Banks and I worked on, was showing the level of turnover we've had as a board and in leadership. I don't think there's any question whatsoever that that constant turnover has had significant impact on our rates of achievement or like thereof. Even as we talk about morale. If you're in a work environment and every six months, you don't know if what you're being asked to do is going to be valued six months later. It's very easy to, you know, take this stance, so I'm just going to wait and see. And so, you end up, you know, it's just human nature, right? So, if you look at the transition that North Public Schools has had since the Great, over the Great Recession, in the midst of the Great Recession, so you have accountability from the state and federal government go up. You have questioning about the public confidence and public education in general being out there. You have multiple superintendents with all their different styles and approaches out there. And you have school boards that, you know, one day you're, you got a system and you're in it. And then, the system may not be supported. Or we just know as a board, every time you add one new member, what, how much time that takes to gel. And so, part of, if you look at that chart, and you've heard me mention before, and I hope that as a board, we can talk about and being committed to whatever it is that we agree to. If you look at that chart, I don't think that there was, may have been two years at the very beginning where you had the same superintendent and the same board. Right now, we're in the position to have two years where you can have the same superintendent and the same board, you know, all going well. So, in my mind, I think we have two years. And if you read all the work, governance report, this stuff doesn't happen overnight. But if we can take the approach that we're going to lay this foundation for subsequent boards to build upon, for the public to have confidence in, and for us to monitor and track our growth and progress, I'm hopeful and optimistic that we can do that work so that subsequent boards and the staff as a whole and the community as a whole can get buy-in into something that we all agree to. And then, we're performing our role of saying to our owners that as a board, we're going to be responsible for monitoring this progress, whether it's academic, whether it's finances, or whatever the, whatever the case may be. So, personally, I don't think we have a choice but to do something. I just hope that we can agree that this is it and then do it. Or if this is not it, then agree to what it is going to be. And then, as we ask the administration to bring forward our different data points and have our discussions, it's being tied to something specific and global and not have us just looking at different one-offs based upon, you know, what events may be happening out there, what particular interests we may have.
So, I think this is a good structure. I know we have to do more of the crosswalk and build the structure out and then apply the dashboard to where it's appropriate. So, I think that's good. Where does the literacy effort for the division come into play?
Looks like it's incorporated, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. It's incorporated in, at the board level. Again, it's incorporated into the, you know, one of our identified needs is to look at reading proficiency. And then, reading proficiency by our, by our gap groups. And so, that is, you know, one of the way, you know, looking at the benchmarks and how well we are doing in terms of meeting those benchmarks will give us an indication of how we are doing in our, you know, in our literacy programs.
But I think it's almost bigger than that if we're talking about what Dr. Boone's talking about. And I agree, it needs to be in here somewhere. But this is really an initiative that's huge for the division. But it's not just a column with a date. You know what I mean?
Right.
Right. And I think we need, I mean, she, she talked about the literacy study, if that's what I believe that you're talking about.
It's really a literacy program she wants to put together, right? System-wide?
Right. But I don't feel like, you know, that may be something that we incorporate as we have a better understanding of what, what that is and-
But how do we hold her accountable to getting it done?
I think that what we might settle on is creating a focus area that may be titled Reading/Literacy.
But isn't that what, isn't that what reading proficiency division-wide by grade level?
Yeah, because I-
Isn't that what those points are right there?
Because I think that's what our tendency is. We, so our job in terms of holding the superintendent accountable is how these things flow into her evaluation. Well, I think what we're trying to figure out at the board level is first, just being clear on, what are the reading C proficiency levels of our students?
We already know that. Last year, we knew it, the year before. I mean, that data, that's a data point Dr. Bailey can give us.
Right. But then, we're going to monitor how, what our progress is over time. So, we know what it is, we know what it was last year. We'll know what it, what it is this year and be able to monitor, monitor the progress. And then, what are we going to do about it if we don't meet those benchmarks? It's something that we have to talk about and let the administration give us a plan for what that is.
I would push back and say whether or not we do know it. I think we know, we look at some SOL data.
Right, it's true.
And we say that there's, so many students are proficient in reading SOLs. I don't know, and I'm a yield, I don't know if she's going to get it. I don't think we really know what the reading, whatever, whatever the measure is, I don't know if we really have a measure of, at the board level that would allow us to say, outside of, you know, SOL data, what would it be at this point?
Well, I think that if we ask the administration based on a focus area of reading literacy, it starts certainly with the plan. And then, once you know what the plan is, what PD is going to be associated, the timeline. Also included in that plan would be the outcomes.
Right.
And so, right now, we do have an instructional application that can inform the progress of students. But we want to create an overarching plan that could be looked upon at pre-K-12. And that's where we are. We recognize, the data has indicated, it's showing that we have a symptom of a problem. And so, what is that? How can we address it? And that's what the administration will be coming back to you. This is our literacy plan that we have been talking about, that Dr. Rogers identified and talked a little about last year and Dr. Cataldo, I think, at the last work session. And that, with that plan, will be an associated instructional application such that we can look at what the outcomes will be so we can measure student progress.
And I think that's important to include in this so it doesn't get lost in just what's the SOL data. Because it is going to be a division-wide effort that's global umbrella. And then, what I would want to know as a board member is the when. I'm going to ask when a lot now because we need to have, when things are going to happen, have them complete and implement so we can have outcomes. Because we can talk about planning forever.
Right. And so, I think that's what, you know, certainly, I can't speak for Dr. Boone and Dr. Rogers, but the district has been working on a plan to address the literacy proficiency, the various levels. And so, you know, how can we also accelerate learning for our advanced learners as well?
Right, right. And we do have, I understand that that's it, but just to, what's in here currently is also, we do have the percentage of kids that are reading on grade levels, just going beyond the SOL, how they're doing on the SOL tests. So, that's incorporated in here. But those, those are all good suggestions.
Right, having multiple measures. Having multiple measures for accountability.
Right.
And so, this is where that would come in. You know, SOL is one measure, but we need, and that's a summative measure. So, we need a measure that we can look at throughout the school year. But it has to be attached to a plan with PD and so forth.
Right, right.
And I mean, when I think about that, what, see, again, I think what, what, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jordan, but I think what this plan also is trying to do is to keep the board at a board level and to keep operations at an operational level.
Exactly, right.
So, while we know that there is a literacy plan that's taking place, and as much as I want to know how Dr. Boone is going to, you know, reach, she's hired somebody for English and reading, and she's doing something with the math and reading specialist, and she's doing professional development, really from a board level, should I be interested in that? Or should I be interested in, are our reading rates going up? Or are, are, are the, are the literacy scores going up? Are we scoring better in the English SATs this year than we were last year? Because all of that would be proof that what she's done to restructure is working. Is that, is that, am I on the right track here?
Yes, you are on the right track, yes.
Okay. So, and I think that what we should do, to Ms. Doyle's point, is to just to keep track of these initiatives because frankly, over the past several years, I'm almost initiative out. When I hear about schools doing another accountability plan, I'm like, oh, gosh, they're going to have to do another strategic plan. They're going to run away from it. But we need to keep this as simple and easy and user-friendly as possible with the least amount of time that they have to input. So, if there's a computer program that you guys need to upgrade to make it easy, please, let's just invest in it ahead now so that it can be so easy for them. It's, it takes the thought process out of it.
Yeah, I just, I lost me.
I agree with definitely what Noel was saying, what our role is in terms of policy. What we, the main thing is we, we certainly want to see a plan, but the outcome that we have to really focus on. And that, that would help us in terms of evaluating what her, what she's doing or if her plan is working. We got to look at the measurable outcomes.
Right.
Dr. Robinson?
My biggest concern is that we're trying to do too much. Even Covey's work, and he'll tell you that, that anything more than three objectives at a time, you're likely not going to get any of them accomplished. So, we really need to hone in on what our priorities are and focus on those priorities. And once we master those, add new things to that.
Well, so, can you expound about it? Because to that point, that's why we tried to roll them up into three?
Yeah.
Now, when you just, when you, so are you saying within the three that you're seeing the things that we're talking about is too much stuff that we're trying to monitor? Or are you saying that once we get- Or are you saying that once we get, can you just expound upon it?
The, the action steps that, that we're going to task the administration with and filter down to the schools has to be very focused, because if you have a broad number of, of objectives that you wanna meet or, or tasks that need to be accomplished, um, it dilutes the, the, the effect of, of being able to, to finish those goals out. As far as monitoring it, you know, we can monitor whatever we want. But I see this thing as being too broad, and I've seen this hap- that was my concern about the strategic plan that was done by the previous administration. That was my concern with um, the superintendent prior to that. Um, I, I, I just think we need to make sure that we don't handcuff the administration and set them up for failure.
Well, I agree, I would, so when we were working on this and, and pulling back from uh, you know, what this division had done, what other divisions had done, um, we were trying to focus on the board's work and not so much what the board was sending to the administration. I would say just from the framework that you have in front of you, what would you suggest we reduce? Is it, is it, are you saying what we are looking at? Are you saying the areas? What, what is it that? Cuz we thought we narrowed it down quite a bit.
I'm not saying reduce, I'm just saying prioritize.
Okay.
What, what action steps are, are, are we going to direct or expect the, the administration to follow?
Well, can I, can I add? Well, I, I think that's uh, raised um, concerns there, because that's what we tried to, that I think was the motivation for doing this, because the action steps, and as you said, referring to the strategic plan, which we know has a bazillion action steps in there. But regardless, the action steps that the administration chooses to take on, I believe are within the realm of what the administration decides is appropriate to execute the agreed-upon goals and measures uh that we determined together. So we're collaborating with the superintendent and cabinet about, you know, uh, what the goals and indicators should be, and then we have our board level. How, how, the how is up to Dr. Boone and her administration, and whether it's 500 action steps, which we hope not, but you know, if it is, or if it's five, I think that's up to uh Dr. Boone to execute. And then we will then see how well um the execution has occurred based on the outcomes that we are putting forward here. So I understand your concern, cuz that's, that was what motivated. But to go back also to Dr. Gabriel's comment about, you know, being initiatived out, um, we also talked about the Great City Schools report and their, their um finding of this program creep having occurred in our division. And so this is a way of us, you know, we even talked about maybe suggesting going back to the recommendations in that report, because there are some good recommendations there that we haven't, at the administration and because of all of the turnover that we've experienced over the last few years, haven't really been able to address. And some of those are very relevant, and were even focus areas these last school years, such as the middle schools. And so I think we're bringing it all together. We have the opportunity to bring it all together through this accountability plan and also reaffirming what our roles are.
I wasn't, and, and I wasn't trying to um denigrate the work that's been done here at all. I just wanna make sure that we don't-
Oh, no, I agree, yeah.
That we don't send a mixed message to the administration. We wanna make sure that we have a very clear message. We need, we need to move forward and we need to focus. Whether it's being, going back to the, the uh, the Council of Greater City Schools recommendations and implementing those and ma- mastering those and then moving on to the next thing. But gotta get buy-in from the, from A, the administration first, and then buy-in from the uh building leaders, and then buying from the teachers, and eventually the, the students and their families.
Go ahead, I think Vons, let's go, let's go.
What?
I, I guess I'm just trying to fo- focus on these, but basically you're saying that, that the uh, that the administration will definitely, will, will put the action plans, put the act-
Right, cuz we didn't, we included it in here other than actions we would take.
So, so we're not really dictating to them.
We're not dictating. And, and in fact, in talking about the buy-in, I mean, we worked on this collaborative, nothing that you see here is, you know, cuz, you know, I have thoughts just like all of you about the kinda data I'd like to see, how I'd like to see it. But Tanya's recommendations are not in here. This is our board's recommendation, that is what you see here. And Dr. Boone's recommendations and Dr. Bailey and Mr. Buddy's input as well. So I think that buy-in piece, I'd like to think is reflected in, in this working copy, which-
And please don't take this as a criticism.
Oh, no, we're not taking it as a criticism.
No, I'm not taking it as a criticism.
I'm looking for clarity. No, I just wanted-
This is a good conversation, yeah.
Right, Dr. Gabriel?
Okay, so what I want to know is how soon are we gonna be able to get the baseline data on what we have in the identified needs column?
So some of it's gonna roll out, it's interesting, oh, I think I was in uh one of these books. And uh, they actually talk about, and Dr. Bailey mentioned it earlier. So we know, for example, that um, uh, preliminary SOL scores may roll out in August final rollout, whatever. There's um data that we know we have from the past year that I would recommend that we begin to populate past year's data so we can start to follow, so trend. So at least maybe we got two or three years of past year's data. And then as uh, as they're able to pull things out of their system, we would have identified uh, you know, under the needs area, what it is that we want to see. And I would hope that they would uh populate them as much as they can, as soon as they can, as soon as it's available.
One of the things that we will do, certainly um, the, the cabinet members will need to meet and also discuss is, we'll create focus areas under the three broad categories. And then from that, we'll discuss priority and so forth. Um, some of our schools are doing well, some of our schools need some reinforcement. And so certainly by level, they will not have all of the same identified need. Um, but we are also, we have multiple projects, I don't wanna say initiatives, but we've got multiple projects going. Um, certainly you mentioned trying to get to uh reporting repository, which is what we have before, to help support the accountability uh plans that we're doing. And that's another area that we're working on. Um, it's, it's gonna take a little time to uh get that application, select it, implement it, and then start seeing what we can roll over from our old system into the new system. Um, but then also link it to these broad categories, because when it gets down to the school level, then, you know, they have specific action steps based on their needs of what they will do, what PD will be in place, how they will monitor or hold their staff accountable. So that's how, you know, it, this is at the top, certainly giving the three broad areas. Then we have the focus areas. Um, the district will work with that. Dr. Boone will then drive the discussions um for the administration, and then it filters down to the school level. And so like um, for my department area, um, I can uh, uh, support the identified need, but I come into play strategies related professional development. I'm not going to support the district to achieve that, um, which may be uh supporting the departments or supporting the schools. Certainly for me, uh, the reporting repository will be one of my projects or initiative that I'd have to get in place to support. So what Dr. Boone would be expecting from me is, okay, this is a project plan, this is a timeline, this is when we'll have our deliverables, and then out, you can see the outcome of it.
So Noel, how far back did you wanna do the comparative data? Uh, and of course, I know that the rest of it would be dictated by the new test scores.
I think the data needs to go back to when the math SOL scores were changed.
And the test were changed? I think that might be too specific.
Yeah, I think we need to look for Dr. Bailey's recommendation on that. So that we can see a trend?
Yeah, it, you know, usually three years, you can see a trend. Um, we do, we have, certainly with the SOLs, we have a full gamut of data. And we've tried to look at the various changes, whether it be board or philosophy or strategies or change in standards, uh, change in cut scores, and whatnot, to see the impact on, on the data. Um, then you have some other things such as the reading literacy. We won't have prior year's data to then look at. We would start, this would be our baseline year. Um, SAT is another area that has changed over the years. So um, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, that, you know, normally research says three years.
Yeah, I think the score's changed, it might be, it might be maybe five years.
Yeah, I think the math may have been five or six years. The English, re- reading and writing, science changed uh four or five years ago.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking three, three, maybe a year before that. But definitely three years, we need three years.
Yeah, and so if, if we have three years, that gives us enough to benchmark. Certainly, we, we like to look at statistical models for our projecting um benchmarks, but um three years should give us enough. Dennis, do you have any comment on that?
But that's what I was gonna say, it has to be consistent.
SOLs at the student level, when we can go back further if necessary. Tells you if you go back four or five years.
What, what did you say about the climate, uh, the language on the climate, what did you?
That you're asking the same questions over a period of years.
How long? I think we've had the climate, yeah, seven or eight years, yeah.
Last year as a result of needs requirement that were given by the office.
Right.
Okay.
So there are, were a few changes for last year and this year.
Is the computerized now, or is it still manually?
It's manual.
Parent survey, the um-
Parent survey, probably, yes.
Parent survey, yes and no.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we offered, and it's linked to the homepage, parents slash guardians can go on and take that survey. There's 27 questions. There's a question about military involvement also. And parents slash guardians are given the opportunity to enter the, their three oldest children. So they could enter, if they've got two, they can enter both child's in the online survey. In addition to that, we did the same thing as we did last year, and you'll see this in the report. We provided printed copies of the survey, exactly the same thing to all the schools. Last year we did the elementary. So we gave those to the principals, and the principals then were able to give those out to parents slash guardians coming into the school to complete, and they sent those back. So the parents were given either option to, if they, you know, didn't have access to a computer and showed up at a school, here's a, here's a survey if you wish to fill it out, and then we'll include the data.
The teacher climate survey?
Teachers, teachers and students are scan sheets. And the reason for scan sheets is the issue of logistics of getting all the information online. We tried the teacher survey one year online, and the response rate was abysmal. Teachers did not complete the survey. We had like about 40% response rate. They basically, you know, they basically just blew it off. So the scan sheets provide a very ineffect, a very inexpensive way to capture the data at the school level for well over 70% of the teachers. And the students the same way, I mean, the logistics of having the students do it. So that it's done in their home, their home rooms, and they're given scan sheets.
The other concern with the survey, um, doing, um, being administered electronically, certainly we're in a better place now than we were seven years ago. But um teachers, the, the, the timing of our survey is usually right before spring break or shortly thereafter. Um, also, teachers are in the process of preparing to wrap up with the delivery of instruction and then prepare for the SOL testing. So some of the pushback that we got was that um, just having the time to do it, um, they may have lost sight of it, um, they didn't have access to a computer to do it. Some were concerned about um being able to do their survey anonymously. And so they feel that if they do it electronically, you can still get back to them, but um-
So is it, is it the timing that we need to look at when we give that survey?
Um, there are various strategies that we could look at with respect to capturing climate information, whether we try to do like a 10 or 12-question uh survey at various um times of the year. We would have to work very, very closely with our school staff to do that at their different events.
So um, a couple of things, just coming back up to uh, to a higher level. Um, as Tanya and I were working, as Ms. Bassin and I were working on this, one of the areas that um, we know we've talked about as a board and we're gonna be looking for guidance is all these growth measures. You know, we've all talked about how it's important to show growth, uh, you know. We, we couldn't necessarily figure that out, uh, you know, you know, how you do that and in what areas you do it. But we at least wanted to make sure that the uh board was still endorsing us trying to figure out ways of measuring growth, and then have you all help us figure out a way to do that in some areas. And then the other uh piece, tying back to board action and results that we see. So we will uh talk about uh teacher retention. You know, during the great recession, we would often offer inducements for people to leave. So we'll offer an inducement for somebody to leave, then we'll come back in the summer and say, oh my God, look at all these folks that we lost. But we don't necessarily always go back and try to determine whether or not actions that we take are encouraged in some simple fact like that. So even as we look at some of the data, we have to make sure that we have ways of tying back, you know, other actions that may be taken and not just make the assumption that-
Board action or administration action?
Whatever, whatever the case. I mean, we approve it, right?
Okay.
We approve it.
Okay.
Okay, we approve it. The board votes, okay? And then the administration is called upon to, to implement. Board may not vote unanimously, but you know, once the board votes, the administration execute. My only point was, is that as part of this ongoing effort, we have to make sure that we are cognizant of and pay attention to, for our own work, actions that we take and don't take, and the impact on the outcomes that we're, that we, that we may see. That's, that's the only point I was trying to make.
Okay, so in terms of next steps on this, I guess there's further crosswalk to be done. We'll receive this back. So my famous question, when will we see this back to know that this is what we're gonna adopt to move on?
Next work session, we will uh continue the, the build-out. We'll send it out for uh, board for uh review and action. And once the board says it's good, we'll give it to the administration, tell them to populate it.
Okay.
Do you wanna wait until then in order for them to populate it, to start populating it?
Well, so if you look on the very first page where it has the uh fully accredited, uh, Ms. Bassin and I started to pull the stuff ourselves, and we said, man, we're getting ready to kill ourselves. So it didn't make sense for us to try to do all of that. Um, but at the same time, we were trying to make sure that with all the things that administration had going, that we didn't pull them from doing something else like this Leadership Institute. So um, when we were working with Dr. Bailey and Dr. Boone, they knew we were doing this and that we were gonna have, fill in the blanks, and that we would hear back from the board, and that they are fully aware that uh, you know, of our schedule of having this in place and running with it September and being able to do the work. So uh, there are some things that we know that they can populate. There are other things that we have to make sure, as Dr. Robinson said, that we're crystal clear on. Uh, cuz even as we were working on this, we had a, uh, I was working on a piece, Ms. Bassin was working on a piece. We sent it to uh Dr. Bailey for review, uh, but she was working on some of the same stuff that we were working on, cuz we didn't communicate well. So we just wanna make sure that we're not sucking up uh, uh, any staff time. But I would think that those things that they have that are available, we could populate, we could populate immediately. There may be others we may not be able to populate till October, December, just depending upon the timing of when the information is available.
And then there's also the dashboard, right? So it may not be here necessarily, as it could be in the dashboard data that would accompany it.
Right, and so there are various time periods. So um, we'll be filling some things in um as the data becomes available. Um, some data doesn't become available until the latter part of August. So I'm assuming that the, the reporting time period is the work session that's scheduled the first Wednesday of each month?
Mm-hmm.
And so um, the first- And so, um, the first of August, you may not have much, um, but the first of September, you'll have quite a bit. Um, and so at that point, it'll be getting closer to being finalized. But also too, you know, the administration has to, you know, I don't totally speak for the administration, but they have to look for this, look at this as well and embrace it, and.
And our, excuse us, and our challenge was, is Tanya and I talked about this over and over and over again. We said we did not want to end the discussion with the board just talking about when is the identified needs column gonna get filled? And not focus on board level indicator strategies and related professional development, which is where our work is.
Okay, but along those lines, we have years of data that can go into those columns, that can go into the identified needs columns so that we can know where we were. And that will help to direct the strategies and the professional development, because if we have the data staring at us in the base that shows X subgroup is, uh, scoring low on this, then that's how we, that's how the board will seek out professional development or maybe go to those sessions to see, you know, what can we do?
Well, you may not see a, a lot of numerical detail in the identified need. It may be a statement. But the dashboard would have.
Well, okay, that's what I'm, yeah, it'll be on the, I'm, yeah.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Right, and, and I think if I'm addressing, just to also tie back into what Dr. Robinson was, uh, getting at with the buy-in, these, everything here are thing, that you see in the identified needs are things that we've already. So to, to bring additional, um, needs in, some will be, may be revealed as we go through, uh, as we receive the data, but for now, what's there is what we have already agreed to. So just.
We have to have.
Just making sure that we're, we're not seeking additional, um, needs at this point in time for the next work session. I'm just making sure I understood that, and everybody else understands that. That we have, we have incorporated the buy-in, that we've already received the collabora, you know, the collaborative effort we've already undertaken to, um, develop this plan. And then we will see what the data tells us going forward.
All right, uh, any other questions, thoughts, ideas, concerns? Otherwise, uh, Ms. Banks, a takeaway and action item that you'll capture in our minutes is that, uh, um, we will take what the board has discussed today. We need to go back and add the, um, a couple of areas that we knew we left off, uh, around retention and some other, some other areas. And that we are prepared, from the board's committee perspective, of coming back to the board with the next draft of this by the August work session, which is just two weeks, uh, for, uh, demonstrating that we have incorporated the feedback that we've received here. Everybody good with that? All right, so you've put this painful as, uh, it might have seemed. Uh, I would mention and just remind the board, um, 'cause in working on this, if you go to the VDOE website, I mean, if you just have your own interest in, uh, looking at stuff, they have, um, truly improved their website with the ability to customize information down to school level, discipline, climate, and so forth. So, uh, you know, you can always go to the VDOE website and, uh, uh, help yourself to that. All right, uh, next agenda item, governance training update and review. Um, we were scheduled to, uh, our current contract with VSBA, uh, calls us this year to do four, uh, two-day retreats. Um, we had one scheduled for, uh, July. We weren't able to do that. We weren't able to be there as a full team. Uh, we've sent out, um, doodle polls and others trying to figure out when we could do another one. So I just, well, it's two things I want to put before the board. Question one is, uh, do we want to, um, continue and fulfill the governance training contract that we have with VSBA? For us as a governance team to do these four, uh, two-day retreats? Uh, if the answer to that question is yes, then we have to figure out, um, how we can, um, manage our schedules, their schedules, Dr. Boone's schedule, in a way that we can get on a calendar, these four, but at least the first one. So we had looked at, um, some dates in August. We couldn't get all seven. Think the sixteenth and seventeenth or something like that. Can't remember the exact dates. We couldn't get all seven together in August. Uh, right now, it doesn't look like we can get all seven together for, I'm sorry, all eight together for, um, September sixteenth and seventeenth.
I thought we all had agreed on that, and that was a go.
We had, but, at least I thought we had too, but we don't have, um, all eight yet for the sixteenth and seventeenth. So that's part of why I'm having the conversation. Do we, can we all do the sixteenth and seventeenth? If not, then I need some dates that I can go back to VSBA with, 'cause you know, uh, October, November, December is always when they start traveling, they have their own conference. So we've always tried to stay away from, uh, that timeframe. Personally, I think we need the training, and I think we need it, uh, more than ever. I was, uh, up at the VSBA yesterday and, uh, was participating in some respects with the new board orientation and with the chair and vice chair training. And remember with the new member orientation, they showed the videos of Andy? Yeah, we're all Andy. So, uh, we need to, uh, figure out how to not be Andies again. Uh, but, you know, can we get, can we get some dates? And, uh, uh, 'cause I wanna, I wanna go back to VSBA and say we are, we are committed to this, and we're gonna find the dates and we're gonna do it, or let it go. Uh, but I don't, I don't wanna be in this position where we're constantly trying to figure out, uh, how to meet the, uh, the terms of that contract. And maybe we need to renegotiate a contract to see if we can do something that's, you know, one day for some other sequence, or work with somebody else. But I just don't think it's fair to, uh, us, uh, or them for us to have constantly be working on trying to prepare for training and then, uh, and then not being able to fulfill it. Dr. Gabriel.
What, what is the cycle that the contract runs on? Is it July to July?
Yes, uh, yeah, July.
The school year.
Yeah, school year.
So it's, so it's July to July.
July to June thirtieth.
So it's July to July, so we've, we have. Okay, so right now, we're behind just one session that we would have to make up.
Right, the original schedule was we would have done, um, one in July and one in September.
One two-day session?
And one in January.
And then one in.
One in April, spring.
And that was it? That was it? There weren't any, like, one day?
No, not in this one. It was just four.
Okay.
Right. 'Cause we reduced it so that we wouldn't have to worry about trying to do six to eight, like we were trying to do at one point. So that's why we changed the six to eight that we once had to try to do, you know, one a quarter, basically.
My recommendation is that, I'm sorry, Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Is that we keep September, we do January, April, and we find one in between? Or we do one at the end, May, 'cause we're all likely to be here again, right? This is an ongoing board.
Right.
So we just tack on one at the end. And we have to just commit to the dates. Now, the challenge, of course, is that life does happen and families.
Oh, yeah, we get that, yeah.
And, you know, families have emergencies, and that's important, and people need to have their priorities, of course.
So. Well, yeah, I'm fine. I thought when we originally had done the calendar, that it was just a one day for the sixteenth. So, um, I, I can be available for the sixteenth and the seventeenth.
So is everybody, can everybody else do that? Dr. Robinson, can you do that?
Yep, I'm good.
Good. So then we will confirm with Dr. Boone, which, uh, I know I'd asked Annalisa to make sure that's still cleared. And then I can get back with, uh, VSBA. And I have probably sort of a message before we leave here, um, to go with the, the sixteenth and seventeenth.
Where will we speak?
Charlottesville.
Right, that would be the plan right now.
And then we, I think we should very much confirm the dates now for the remaining.
Yeah, well, I need to get them to, well, we already had, um, I'll get them to resend the dates so I can send them out to everybody. 'Cause we had, um, uh, dates they had given us for January. I just don't have it in front of me. But yeah, I, I agree. But I just wanted to make sure we could just have the, um, have the, uh, have the conversation agreement.
Then let's just tack one on, you know, May-ish.
Yeah, I mean, I would, yeah, I remember one year.
It has to be a two-day.
Well.
Doesn't absolutely have to be.
Let's just see what they say.
So, so we've, we've always been flexible. Um, uh, you know, I just wanna make sure that we fulfill the terms. We know as we've worked and as we work with VSBA, um, you know, if you calculate the total number of hours, I think we've always met the total number of hours or tried to meet the total number of hours. Um, but I'll, I'll, uh, review that with them, um, when I, when I talk to them about it. But at minimum, we always tried to at least have the summer one and the January. It kinda gave us the starting point in the mid-year. And then we always worked on the ones in between based upon, uh, you know, their schedules and hours.
And really, that, quite frankly, if I may say so, that morphed when we switched from Panasonic to, to, um, VSBA, because it wasn't really about the trainings as much as those two meetings were about retreats.
Correct.
And the trainings that were the other two.
You mean the LAP institutes?
Well, the LAP institute would be like the, like the NSBA, not the NSBA convention.
Right, would, it'd be a team.
No, I'm talking about the other trainings that we would add into it with the VSBA. That was my understanding when we switched from the.
Yeah, I, I remember at the ti, I think that, um, what the division was doing with Panasonic, you know, Panasonic was really focused on helping us with this work and, uh, trying to close achieving gaps. What we're doing with VSBA is, uh, how do we be a stronger governing team?
Right.
And I think we just kinda.
That was part of, that was what the retreats were for, that in my, in my estimation.
Which, that's what I'm saying, which retreats?
In January and in July.
The ones we were doing with VS, with Panasonic or the one we were doing with VS?
With Panasonic.
Oh, okay, okay.
To create the, the, the team, and those actually morphed into data sessions.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
So when we switched to the VSBA, the idea was to have more retreat, real retreat at those two times. The, the January and the July meeting.
Which was retreats?
Then they got more, morphed into trainings up in Charlottesville.
Right, but I wanna make sure I'm clear that the, 'cause we went through this conversation before, so, uh, it's like I remember when the division would have a summer retreat with Panasonic. And they would discuss, uh, data and achievable results and things like that. So it was more of a retreat of the board around the work of the division.
Yes, and we'd start, we'd start out with a self-evaluation.
Right, you would do some, right, some of that on one day.
That would be the, you know, we'd do the, the, the leadership.
Right.
Information, the, the, the committee's assignments.
Right.
All that would be done as part of that.
Right.
And then, then we would do the self-evaluation, and then it would become in, looking at the work of the, of the division.
Right.
So how we could look at data better.
Right, and so in what we're doing now, and in the conversations we had before, in my mind, what we're doing now is trying to spend the work of the division, um, in the division with our team like we just did today. And to the extent, if we need somebody to come and help facilitate that work, then, you know, we would work with Dr. Boone to bring somebody to facilitate. But the governance training is, uh, you know, getting us focused on how we become a stronger governance team, which focuses on our goal of, or priority of being a board of distinction. So it's a different, different thing, so. But in any event, what we're leaving this discussion is, we are committed to it. Sixteenth and seventeenth, I think those are the right dates, in September. And, um, and then we'll also get the dates for the, for the other sessions. At least the three we know we can do, and then figure out, um, like Ms. Doyle say, maybe since we're gonna end up continuing anyway, we don't necessarily have to start in April. We could go to May or even June for that matter, if the, uh, whatever the, whatever the timing, however the timing works. Uh, superintendent and, uh, board clerk evaluation, um, going to get Dr. Boone's info that she provides to us, to you. Um, I do have a template to send you for Ms. Banks. Uh, remind me, did I send you all what, I remember sending you something. Did I send you what I received from Ms. Banks before?
I don't know.
Anybody remember seeing that?
I thought you did.
For a past, I sent you something. I can't remember if that's what it was. Uh, I'll go back and look, but there were, um, past evaluations that Mrs. Banks had had. And I was trying to work with, uh, Mr. Billups and VSBA to see if there was some, uh, specific tool that maybe folks were using for clerks, but I hadn't seen one. So when you go back and look at, um, um, uh, if I didn't send it to you, I'll re, I will send, I'll resend, and you look at it, you'll see that there was a, uh, instrument that they used in various areas based upon the, the job description that was there for the, for the board clerk. But our process is still that we would then take that tool from our perspective from the past year and fill that sheet out and get that back to Dr. Boone. And then Dr. Boone will be working with, uh, Mrs. Banks, and then through us, through the normal process, where Mrs. Banks would be able to share with, uh, Dr. Boone herself eval, and then filter that back, back to us. But our goal is to provide feedback to Dr. Boone on how, uh, Mrs. Banks has supported us based upon that sheet that you'll see. Okay?
Timing of that?
Uh, well, we, well, we said the last meeting, we would, um, have that today in time for the August, the August meeting.
The August work session.
Right, it's when we were trying to make sure that our feedback was back to Dr. Boone.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so you'll send that out to us with a deadline?
Yeah, I'll resend that if you didn't get it before.
I don't recall seeing it.
I don't remember seeing it either.
All right, well, I.
I'm sure you probably sent it, but I don't recall seeing it.
I sent, I sent something, and if it wasn't that, I'm not sure what it was I sent to you.
Why don't you just resend with a due date?
No, that was, it should not have, but I'll resend it.
I have a lot to go to clutter.
So if you could, uh, yes, let's set a deadline that we wanna have this information back.
Well, we agreed before, it would be by, uh, what is it, August third, whatever that work session is.
Please forgive me, but I don't recall, so.
Okay, oh, yes, okay, yeah.
So the deadline, and I'll make sure I'll have that back to you.
I will include that in the email.
Correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, so you'll give us information of which we can provide feedback, excuse me, for both superintendent and clerk.
That's correct. Um.
And do we wanna send it back directly back to you?
I think so.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. And then, 'cause I'll pull it all together and then send it to Dr. Boone. Um, we have, uh, some time, uh, Ms. Doyle, if there were some other items you wanted to, uh, or anybody wanted to.
I had an idea too.
Well, Ms. Doyle had brought something up earlier, so I was gonna yield to her first.
I think it'd be helpful for Dr. Boone to be here, but I was interested in.
We can wait, if you wanna wait.
Yeah, let's, let's just.
Anything that we can talk about just as a board for Dr. Boone's voices? Dr. Gabriel?
Um, now that we have a student representative on our board, um, one of the things, uh, as of, you know, we're looking at our discipline and, uh, climate and morale and initiatives in our school division, some other divisions and a lot of colleges and universities have, um, a student honor council. I don't know if, um, any of you all are familiar with them, but a student honor council is different than a, um, like the student, like an SCA, like a student government association. But it's basically an, an honor council where the kids in the building, the school building, um, try to police themselves through, um, a code of conduct that they all adopt. And, um, it's, it's, it's almost like an unspoken. they all adopt, and it's, it's, it's almost like an unspoken, you know, this is how we're going to act, and then the students, they, the students have a council, an honor council that they sit on, and if there's things that come up between students, they help to mediate the conflicts themselves. We used to have a program in our public schools called conflict mediation, but this would be something that would take on a little bit more of a, it would be a very, it's, it's usually a very honorable position to be on, to be on the student council and then to put things in place within the building to develop camaraderie, honesty, and support amongst the students. So I, I wanted to get your thoughts on something like that, if we wanted to look and see if other school divisions were doing that, and I wanted to hear feedback from our student representative to see if that would be something that he would want to do.
So tie it to the board, I'm not sure I'm following, what's the, is this a program that, that the administration was being operated at school level, or you're saying this is something that was somehow being operated at our level?
I don't think that it would be operated at our level, other than the fact that we have a student representative on the board now, and so he would be, he, this, this might be something that he could look into to see if it would be something that students would, they could pilot a program and see if that would, that would be an initiative that would help to boost morale or camaraderie or help with student discipline.
I recall Dr. Boone saying she was establishing...
Student advisory.
She is, so, I mean, it could, it could go into that, I mean, it's a very, it's a very, powerful isn't the right word, but it is a very respected group at a lot of universities and a lot of private schools have, have it, and it, it, it basically sets the tone for the students in the school, you know, this is how we're going to operate and we're going to police one another, so if we see something that's happening, we're going to, Dr. Stewart would say, see, see something, do something, or say something, so, I don't know, I just, it's, it's a new topic, something that I wanted to bring to the table and see if any of you all had any interest in it, and if it would be okay to ask our student representative or even put it to Dr. Boone for the committee to talk about, or student committee.
Well, we can, it just seems to me, we were just talking about more projects and initiatives that we would be adding, that it sounds like it might be another project and initiative that we would add, but I would think that if there's some, there, there will be some recommendations or some initiatives that Dr. Boone would just be informing us of, I wouldn't want to create more, more burden at this, at this point, so, I mean, that's just my, my feedback on, on the others.
It sounds like a, a, a very worthwhile initiative, but I think I agree with Mr. Jordan, is that right now the plate's pretty full, allow Dr. Boone to develop her student advisory committee, as well as our work with the new student board member, and then let that evolve over time, but just to add, just to, it's, like I said, it's a great idea, and I know it works in universities.
Yeah, and I wanted to, because sometimes if you're a part of solving the problem, you take a little bit more ownership in it, and you're going to be a better person to, to speak on behalf of what the problems and the conflicts are, so it would totally be student-led, student-driven, student-initiated, and if it's not something that they want to take on right now, but it, it, it might be something that they could, they could pilot, so I'll, I'll defer to what Dr. Boone thinks.
I think some buildings are doing it, I mean, what we may, you know, we just may not be aware of it, but I know at some, some schools they are doing PIS, and some folks are doing conflict mediation, but I don't...
I do think, yeah, but it's, it's a school-specific.
Hey, we'll wait and hear from him, what he suggests, you know, he might suggest something like that, but I do think you bring up a good point in that, that we begin to think about as a board, some initiatives or research, if you read the, the policy, you know, the student board member is supposed to be available to do some research and to make some recommendations and to bring that voice to the table, so we probably should be thinking about some things that we would like for, like for him to work on, even as he brings to us some ideas that I'm sure he would like to work on himself.
And if we, if we are, since we have a little bit of time, I think another area that would be great for him to, are we? I should have asked that first. Is even to consider, you know, once we've, the, the school health advisory committee has established, you know, what their goals are, and to relook at the policy, is also getting student-driven programs and play, you know, preventative activities in the school buildings that are, you know, relatable to students, that could be something that he could possibly, you know, engage in, is looking at research by students, for students, you know.
We have a lot of policies that need to be reviewed, we'll find plenty of opportunity to get him engaged. Anything else, otherwise we can take a break, and once Dr. Boone arrives, we can prepare to go into our closed executive session. Anything else? All right, so, why don't we entertain a motion to go into closed executive session, we'll have that out the way, and then when Dr. Boone arrives, we can, we can do that.
Do you have an ETA by any chance?
Originally, she said she'd be here by five, so I'm sure she's on her way.
I move that we enter into closed session.
All right, I have a second.
I second that motion.
Ms. Banks, you ready to read us in?
It's been moved and seconded that the members of the school board, superintendent and council go into closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for the discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, promotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools, including consideration of the personnel docket of this date, for discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools, specifically the people personnel docket of this date, and for consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by counsel. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
All right, so we can take a little break, but as soon as Dr. Boone gets in here, we'll, we'll be in executive session. Good evening, welcome to our Norfolk Public Schools business meeting. We're going to go ahead and proceed and get started, Ms. Doyle, I believe you have some information for us.
Good evening and happy summer. We request that all cellphones and pagers be turned to vibrate or turned off during the course of this meeting. And now, it is our tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise so that we can pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Chairman Jordan, members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen, even though it is summertime, we still have exciting things that happen with our close of the school year, and as we've entered into our summer schools and summer programs. So I want to thank Communications Department, Channel 47, for tonight's NPS highlights.
Community members, Norfolk Public School staff, and city leaders were all on hand to witness the school board's historic swearing-in ceremony at Granby High School. School Board Chair Rodney Jordan and Vice Chair Dr. Noel Gabriel became the first elected school board members to be sworn in. In addition, Lake Taylor's Torianna Spree was sworn in as the school board's first-ever student representative.
It is definitely an honor, it's exciting, I worked really hard to get to this position, but I definitely give praise to all the other applicants who decided to go forth for the position. I feel that I'm well-qualified and well-prepared for this job, and I look forward to running into it head-on.
Over seventeen hundred Norfolk Public School students from all five high schools crossed the stage at the Ted Constant Convocation Center at Old Dominion University during two days of graduation ceremonies. This year's graduates have earned nearly sixty million dollars in scholarship funds, which is a twenty million dollar increase over last year's total. Congratulations to the class of 2016. Lake Taylor High's Darnell Yule, one of the top high school football players in the country, made a big announcement in front of family, friends, and teammates. The senior-to-be announced he will attend the University of Notre Dame in 2017 to play defensive tackle.
Notre Dame, because I just fit there, I felt like it's my niche, I mean, besides any other school, it was really up to me, you know, I will be staying there the next four years of my life, you know, and I felt like that was the place for me, besides any other school, it just felt like home. Growing up, I never really liked football, to be honest, it really got me into it, it was a group of girls, for real. In middle school, I wasn't into it, I just did it because of them, eventually I started liking and loving the sport and going after it, but if anything, I didn't watch college football before, and the only school I would really watch was Notre Dame, so when I got this Notre Dame offer, it really just spoke volume, you know, and I really had to check out the school for myself, and I was really pleased, so that's what kind of got me where I am now.
I'm just blessed, I'm just thank God, you know, I'm just blessed, he made the right decision, I'm happy for him, he's going to do some wonderful things at Notre Dame, and I mean, he's a good kid, you know, I mean, he's an honest student, I mean, he's a role model, I mean, he's, he sets the tone for Lake Taylor High School, and I'm just looking for good things in the future.
With a 3.4 GPA and a membership in Lake Taylor's NJROTC program, Yule is the latest Lake Taylor player to show success both on and off the field.
Well, it's awesome, it just shows some, some kids that they too can do the same things, you know, that Darnell doing, al-also, it just gives, it validates the program, we put out many kids in college and we continue to do it, it's not a thing by luck or chance, you know, it's an opportunity that, that keeps coming for a lot of young men.
The City of Norfolk's Public Works Department held a Safe Summer Rally for students at Ruffner Academy just prior to the end of the school year. Students learned about summer programs with the Norfolk Police Department and the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Open Space. They also heard from NBA referees Leroy Richardson and Tony Brothers, and they enjoyed entertainment from Greek organizations from Norfolk State University and Booker T. Washington High School's pep band. The Special Education Department held its annual Roseanne Fox End-of-the-Year Work Experience and Internship Celebration at the Knights of Columbus Building in Norfolk.
This event is very important for us because we are celebrating not only our students and their accomplishments and achievements for the year, but we're also recognizing their achievements as well as recognizing our business partners.
Students received awards for their excellence through various internships and jobs they completed this past year. Businesses who worked with the partnership helped expose students to real-world job experience.
I believe it's important that every student learns how to work in the workplace, and they have programs for regular students in high school that gets them ready for job readiness, and there's not as much available through the Norfolk Public Schools because they don't have the resources to do it, so it's important for the businesses to help the students who want to become, you know, productive adults in, in life, have a, a foundation for it.
One student who took advantage of this program was Timothy Sherrod. Sherrod, who now works for the radio station, Joy 1270, gave the students an inspirational message.
I'll just tell them to not give up, don't listen to people that tell them that they can't do anything, and, yeah, don't listen to them that tell them that they can't do anything, because I'm doing it a lot. I, people hasn't told me that I couldn't do it, but I thought that I couldn't do it myself, so I had to believe in myself and told myself that I couldn't, that I couldn't do it.
Along with the awards, this program featured a fashion show, lunch, and a dance that gave everyone a chance to socialize.
I think what this says is that based on the crowd here today, that, that the support is tremendous from not only the, the teachers, the staff, and the families of our, of all of our students, I think, I think that, as you can see, that the crowd is very supportive, and I think that our special education program is stronger and getting stronger, I think there is a way to, you know, we have some way to go still with strengthening our programs and all of our programs for all of our students, but I think we're on the right path.
The Norfolk Federation of Teachers distributed books to the entire student body of Tidewater Park Elementary through their First Books Program. The program's goal is to help young students with the fundamentals of reading. Each grade level was able to come into the school's media center and select a book of their choice according to their grade and reading level. For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNS TV 47 or the NPS website.
Again, thank you to Channel 47 and all who supported the wonderful video that allows us to really showcase the great things that are going on in Norfolk Public Schools, and our students are thriving and doing very well, and we look forward to when we kick off the new school year soon and bring that information to the board also.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Next on our agenda will be citizens' comment on agenda and non-agenda items. We would ask that when your name is called, if you would please follow these steps, come forward to the speaker's podium, the podium may be adjusted to suit your height, please state your name, and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you're employed by the system, state your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or an organization, you may ask the others to rise and be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting materials to the clerk for the record. Speakers are limited to one appearance of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. Ms. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. We have two speakers signed up this evening, the first is Rochelle Geddis, followed by Mary Simpson Jones.
I have a couple agenda questions, does that count towards the non-agenda three minutes?
Yeah, you may include that, yes.
That's, okay, so my non-agenda item question is regards to GDB Support Staff Employment Status, I feel like there should be a clause on this page in regards to when state, when support staff, when applicable, needs a state license regarding VDOE, because some of the support staff within the schools need to have a license of some kind, and that, that statement's not in there. Then in regards to BDC Closed Meetings in Section 2, I feel like this statement, discussion or consideration of adminis, admission or disciplinary matters, or any matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student in Norfolk City School System, I feel like when you guys had, when the school board had their closed-door meeting in regards to my son Connor Geddis and the lack of an investigation being completed, I feel like this second paragraph would pertain to, my husband and I should have been invited to this meeting, where it was discussed that when Kip Rogers was speaking on behalf of the school board by stating that investigation would not be opened. Additionally, on the second page, Section C, it states that open public is permitted to the meeting when it's in consideration of a topic which is a benefit to the committee, and having both sides of the situation definitely would have been beneficial to an investigation being denied. So my non-agenda items, I feel like there's a lot of double standards within Norfolk Public School Administration and parents, and what I mean by that is, if a student, for instance, my son, was to violate policies and procedures on multiple habitual occasions, it would be requested by the school board and administration to have a meeting with myself and my son to obtain information, and you guys could have disciplinary matters against the student. The, the double standard is coming when administration has failed multiple policies and procedures, and the parent isn't given that respect of a meeting. and the parent isn't given that respect of a meeting. Dr. Boone, I do understand that you're an extremely busy person and that there's some thirty-two thousand children in Norfolk Public Schools. However, I do believe that at some level of four and a half months of me dealing with this issue of my son not being given the due diligence of an investigation and it being stated on multiple times, multiple occasions, that you're no longer going to consider my request for an investigation. It's very disconcerting to me, and it's disconcerting to the commitment that you have stated you have to Norfolk Public Schools children because you're denying my son an investigation for harassment, retaliation, and intimidation. You've never spoken to me or my husband or my son to ask the detailed information. It would be similar to somebody you knowing being arrested on hearsay, going straight in front of a judge, and then sentenced. There's no police investigation. You never had your one phone call. You never spoke to a lawyer. You went straight from hearsay straight to jail. There's no due process. That's what America is. We're given the ability to have a due process and investigation. That same ability breaks down at the school level. You know, my son should be given that ability for an investigation, questions to be asked. What happened? When did this happen? And then I requested information under FOIA. I was informed that it would be $297.87 to receive all emails that pertain to this instance over the last four and a half months. I am almost done. Over the last four and a half months. I express that if the policies and procedures would have been followed for the last four and a half months, I wouldn't be sitting in the position to need to request the records. I don't believe that it's fair for a parent to pay $300 for records that she shouldn't have to be requesting if policies and procedures would have been followed four and a half months ago. Now, I sit in the position, do I spend $300 to see where the disconnect was in the policies and procedures and communication with administration? Or do I spend that $300 on family adventures prior to my husband deploying in less than a month? Because that's the reality I'm at. My children deserve the extracurricular vacations with my husband prior to him deploying in the event that the reality is, is that some don't come home? Or do I spend that $300 and assist the school administration on finding where the disconnect is so that my son can go to his own school with assurance that these are going to be taken serious in the future?
Thank you.
Chair Percy, Rodney Jordan, Noel Gabriel, and Rodney, congratulations on your appointment, and good afternoon to all other school board and members of the school. Last time you may have saw me was in January, and in January, neither one of the supervisors of Booker T. Washington got in touch with me pertaining to the incident that I fell through a bleachers at the school. So, I wrote a letter, and I did have a meeting with a superior here as of this day, when the athletic director told me to go to the hospital. I did not know I incurred $3,500 on a medical bill. Now, I go to a orthopedic doctor who referred me to therapy, a podiatrist who referred me to therapy. So, I'm going through therapy now, and very seldom I can even walk around a corner when I could use to walk eight laps around Granby High School. This is very cumbersome. This is very injustice because I was on my time, but I was hurt. I'm hurt how the case is going. I feel like Norfolk Public School can't handle it without me going on the outside trying to. I can't wear nothing but sneakers. The reason why you have not seen me because I have been substituted, not that substitute. Have to go home and take my medicine because they said my whole body is in pain. They even said my hips had to be rotated. So, I want you taking consideration, just in case, if that was your daughter, if that was your wife or mother, and your mother fell through some bleachers, why you can't get any help? Why the bills have to incur on you? Why you have to use your money to get the medicine? It's frustrating, but it's the best thing I can do. I was able to go to school, teach the children, but I was in excruciating pain. Excruciating. Because I had to do what I needed to do once, I could not wait no longer to see what the school was going to do or administration. So, on behalf of that, I hope I am able to get an expedient response before other measures are taken because I feel like Norfolk is a great city and all, and I go by your protocols and all. So, all due respect, that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other speakers?
Yes, sir. That concludes our speakers for the evening.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts with the board and with the superintendent. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. There's one item I meant to address earlier, the, when I reviewed the July 6, 2016 minutes, I thought there were some areas missing, so I would just like to have that item pulled, and we can act upon it at our next business meeting. But other than that, if there's, is there anything else that board members would like to consider separately from the consent agenda?
With regards to the, let's see here, the local gifted education plan, is this a plan that we have to vote on? We've been able to, we've had it in our box to review for a while. There have been some suggested changes, but is this the plan, an item that we have to vote on because of time constraints or because it's just something that the state requires us to act upon and they need it right now?
Dr. Boone, you like to address that?
Yes, Dr. Gabriel. The board had reviewed it. There was some feedback, some input, and we're at the point now where board action is necessary so that we can forward our completed plan to the state.
Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda, minus the minutes from the July 6 meeting.
I move that we approve the consent agenda without 5.05 approval of the minutes, July 6, 2016.
Do I have a second? Any further question or discussion? Ms. Banks, your call, the roll, please.
Thank you. Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Man, is this right? Okay, next up, we have discussion of board reports. Have any board reports? I know there was some questions and comments about the construction committee report. Is there, Ms. Doyle, did you have some?
Sure. So, I was able to get some questions answered, but I was curious because I thought I saw that the track, along with the parking lot and the parking lot at Gen Elementary, along with the parking lot at Maury, was going to be done together. And are people aware that it's just going to be the parking lot at the two schools and not the track?
I'm not sure who's aware, but again, as I understand from Mr. Gay, that that dealt with the financial and other challenges that the track, the need and the cost for the track and the requirements for that was going to exceed, and so, moving forward with the parking lots, but not the track at this point.
Okay, and I saw that most of the projects are going to be completed by the start of the school year. Are they using this past fiscal year's funding to support those projects?
I'm looking at Ms. Ingram. I'm thinking that these were projects that we had encumbered because as we look at the dates of when the bids were put out there and the responses to the bids, I believe we have encumbered the funds from FY '16, and therefore, the projects were being completed under that. Obviously, we tried to do that with most of our maintenance projects. Sometimes there may be one or two that fall under the current fiscal year, but most of those, we believe, and we will verify that for.
Okay. And then, could we just have an updated document that reflects the projects that were funded and to be completed within the timeframe, within the encumbrances of last year, and then what we're funding this year based on our CIP? I think that would be helpful moving forward so that we can know what projects we should expect, and then what has been completed this past year under the 3.5 million.
Yeah, I think we had a report, but one of the things that perhaps what we can do is ask the members of the construction committee, Dr. Robinson, Dr. Gabriel, if you can take the recommendation from Ms. Doyle and work in your committee and come back and just make sure that if there's an existing report that you all are reviewing, whether or not that's something we need to make available, or if it's something that you can work on to make sure that we have that update.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Any other board reports at this time? All right. Hearing none, so any new business any member would like to address? Ms. Doyle?
So, not necessarily new business, but I just wanted to follow up on a few things. Dr. Boone, this afternoon, we talked about our committees, and Ms. Wagner and I will be working together on the Legislative Committee, so I really wanted to get a jumpstart on working with our partner, Adana Strategy, on developing our advocacy plan. So, if we could maybe work together, not, I know you're out next week, but soon thereafter, to bring them in, work with them, and work with the division on what we might want to do so we can get early planning?
Absolutely. We'll start facilitating that process.
Right. Thank you. And then, at the Virginia School Board Association Conference yesterday, which was in Richmond, was excellent. And one of the programs I went to, the workshops, was regarding military connectedness, and I just wanted to commend, I know Dr. Birdsong is going to be working very closely with the city in making sure we identify our military-connected students. And so, I think it's important that we really focus on that effort so that we're identifying all students that are related to the military so that we can provide the maximum support for them. And I know that's a huge focus, actually, what the Department of Education has decided to do, which is a good thing, is that they've had a part-time personnel. She's actually a full-time employee, but half of her work is related to military connectedness, advocacy. And the Department of Education has identified a need for it to be really a full-time position, so they're going to be moving to a full-time, and they're going to be working with divisions like ours. So, I look forward to us being able to work with that individual. And so, I just encourage us to really connect with these military and us identify the students and see what we can do at the start of the school year.
Thank you for those comments. We are working very diligently, along with the work that Dr. Bailey and Dr. Flanagan are doing with the grants that we, grant that we have for that. It's, we are present at the table. They know our focus on this work, and so, they understand exactly where we are and all the efforts that we're putting into it.
Good. And then, I know we just chatted a little bit earlier, but I certainly look forward to the opening of the two new schools this fall, so it'll be exciting to see our community and our teachers and parents and everybody come out and support these great new facilities that are going to provide great opportunities for children to learn a wonderful curriculum in the near future.
Dr. Robinson?
Just point of information, if you look at page three of the construction committee minutes, there's a list of 2016 CIP projects that are funded, that are on their way to being completed.
And I was looking at that relative to what was in the CIP book for last year, and so that's where I saw a bit of the discrepancy. So, that's why I was curious as to why things, some were done and some were not, simply.
Because of moving money around, as we always have to do, because we only have $3 million.
You know, one of the things, if I can just add, being on the construction committee, we have a set amount of price for the materials, and then we also have to take into account the labor.
Right.
And when they start taking into account the labor, and then the fact that most of them have to work at night, so we have minimum disruption to the students, that increases the price for some of our projects, but I think that it's worthwhile for us to go back to the committee and work on that and bring it back.
Both in report, and I just remind the board that as part of our ongoing work sessions, one of the areas we're going to address is facilities, and I think at that time, we'll get an opportunity to actually have the administration be prepared to receive questions and give us updates, and then we'll be able to really have a good discussion during the work session. But I appreciate Dr. Robinson and Dr. Gabriel hearing the concern and working with the administration on seeing if there's anything we need to do to update the report that you all received and noted in the minutes in order to make sure that the full board is up to date on our progress and of any issues associated with the funding that would help inform our work moving forward. Anyone else have anything? All right, hearing none, we will consider ourselves adjourned, and have a great weekend.